This is President Sping's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Dean Tech Texas over at Coach 551. They'll join me in the pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We are going to begin our meeting as we like to begin our meetings with recollections of our students and our staff and the great things that are happening. But before we start with some of those recollections, I want to say a special thank you to our Belton New Tech High School of Los Angeles students who are filming us tonight and helping us out with that. One of our requirements legislatively is that our board meetings are posted, video of our questions online. Yeah, our students are actually involved in taking care of that duty course tonight. We think that's extra special. That's very nice. And just a thank you to all of you who have shared Christmas cards and information and on their greetings, Christmas greetings with us. Thank you for that, including Arnold Lueck. What was that? So, let's begin with what has become an annual event for us to recognize one young lady who is extraordinary.
Well, and what I love is we get a couple of opportunities each year in a recycler. We'll start tonight with the National School Bus Safety Week poster contest. And I'm very excited to introduce you again, Chibonjo Hock. Chibonjo is a sixth grader at Lake Belton Middle School. I think they've known her for about five or six years.
We have watched her grow up. Here at our board meetings, we're seeking recognition for being a lady.
Winning the School Bus Safety Poster Contest at the state and national level repeatedly. This year, we're celebrating her second place win in her division of the School Bus Safety Poster Contest in action.
Robert is here today tonight. He's gonna talk and take pictures. And we have a scrapbook of pictures that I hope you all caught this. This is annual. She wins the state. She goes on and represents Belton in national competitions and does great. Now that's figured out, and she's an extraordinary artist. We're so proud of you. Congratulations. Look forward to seeing you next year. Same time and same place, huh? Good job. All right. Next recognition is to our CTE Month 2017 Public Service Announcement Video Contest.
And what's really cool is this is another national award for our students that we get to celebrate tonight. Tonight, we're celebrating Belton High School students Serena Castor and Brayden Smith. They took second place in the ACTE, CTE Month Public Service Announcement Contest. Their video was shown at the National Convention in Las Vegas, and it will be highlighted on the organization's website through next summer.
That's wonderful. Please, look, I should've said this earlier. Please don't be shy about coming up and taking pictures. They want you to take their pictures if they act like they know. And we'll be taking pictures to put onto our website, but we want parents and everybody to come up and join us. And Randy, you got you up here with us in that picture. You sponsor. Come join us.
I didn't have anything to do with it. They didn't follow my advice. Good thing.
Remember, Angela. We're proud of you. That's the way to represent. Good stuff. Okay, well, our next recognition is the Texas Association of Future Educators State Qualifiers.
We have nine Belton High School students who have qualified to compete at the Texas Association of Future Educators State Competition, which will be held in Arlington in February. The students who have qualified have qualified in a number of events, beginning with the Inside Our Schools event, where Michael Gomez, Marissa Luna, and Ashley Tarkstedt will be competing.
Come on up. Come on up.
We have.
We got, just know what we got, just looking good for you. You're posing for a photo op.
Tatiana Gomez, Catherine Levin, Emma Bronze, and Elizabeth Rankin are competing as two teams in the Bulletin Boards event. Emma and Elizabeth are also competing in children's pre-kindergarten literature. And Emma, Daniel, Luke, Verella, and Kiara Collins are competing in educational leadership fundamentals. And Daniel's also competing in impromptu speaking. Excited to be joined tonight by Melissa Beasley, who's the DAS sponsor.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. We're proud of you all. Great, it's a big deal. We getting enough pictures? Okay. Good job. There we go. All right. How about we recognize our high support with Title I reports.
Campuses where at least forty percent of students enrolled qualify for the free and reduced price meal program are described as Title I schools because they receive funding under Title I of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. As part of the state of Texas waiver from certain aspects of the No Child Left Behind Act, the state identifies both high performing and high progress Title I schools. And this year has identified Leon Heights Elementary School as a high performing Title I reward school.
Once again, we have high support for high performing. Very grateful to all of our school districts. Okay, and we have our big recognition partner each month. We recognize our partners. We have, which are your partners in front?
Absolutely. We have two sites in the Baylor Scott &amp; White system. Baylor Scott &amp; White Medical Center Temple and Baylor Scott &amp; White Aclaim Children's that provide incredible opportunities for our health science students. They allow students to participate in career shadowing, pharmacy tech, and lobotomy programs. The preceptors at both locations donate their time to make sure that these students get hands-on experience in the hospital setting to see what these careers are really like, to build experiences that they can draw on as they move forward in career or in higher education.
Okay. Good job. Thank you all for posting pictures. You know, it's a great opportunity for our students. Obviously, we, one of the things we've worked really hard is to provide opportunities for our students in diverse fields. And we are providing great opportunities for them. Thank you for doing that. That's, that's, that's what you need for many, many school districts who don't have this opportunity. We're really honored that you're a partner with us and providing great students. Thank you for allowing us to do that. Thank you for expanding. Thank you for doing that. Expand. Okay, and I'm just gonna show this off because we happen to have it. Those of you that were at a football game or Tanner Yearwood scored a touchdown, this was, Coach Shipley brought this in, and we're gonna have this prominently on display in this building. Really proud of that. That kind of neat, neat picture. A great opportunity for, that's somewhere we're seeing, a great opportunity to just to honor one of our wonderful student athletes. We're proud to have that. I hope I helped you out. Okay, now, we finished all those. I think one other recognition I wanted to just say thank you. Connie, Dr. Qua, everybody who had a role in our Christmas party last week, what a phenomenal experience. We got to be at Belton High School, hosted this once again. The new library, Student Center area was decorated for our art students. Southern Arts provided food. Harmony Magical provided entertainment. Just a number of people involved in that. So, thank you to everyone who was able to be part of it. We even had, Andy was there as a special guest. Certainly, thanks, Andy Foster. So, thank you all, everybody, for that. Okay, our next, this is kind of a report, recognition, and appreciation, but Robert Jones is here to give us an update on the Belton High School Foundation.
Thank you for letting me come and just kinda give you an update on the foundation. So, those of you that have been here before, this will be old, this slide, but for those of you that are new.
Robert, would you turn your camera to the mic so I can see it?
Zero. Is it? Green? Green? So, we were founded in nineteen ninety-two and enhance the quality of education of the students at the ISD. We award teacher grants and paraprofessional grants to students and teachers, and we have in our bylaws that we can have thirty-one board of directors. This year, we grew in assets back over a billion eighty thousand. So, our two thousand seventeen board of directors that will be returning are listed here. And if you'll know, we have Randy Pitcher and Susan Kecan and their advisory non-voting members. Then we've added, in two thousand seventeen, we've added ten new members. So, we'll be a full board of thirty-one. So, we've got the, this group here. Although they're not coming in until January, they actually, seven of these ten attended our prize patrol on December 6th. So, we feel really confident about their involvement. Two thousand seventeen, this is our officers and our executive committee. I served as two years as president and happy to announce that our president in two thousand seventeen will be Julie Bryan. Secretary Sue Groban, our treasurer, spirit masters, and Daniel O'Poser will stay on as vice president of development. Wendy Fitzwater will stay on as vice president of programs. And then Alan Testrow is gonna move up to the marketing and events vice president. And I'll stay on the executive committee as what we call at-large.
I want to interrupt you here and just say another special thank you. You have served as president not just the last two years, but during the time of transition for me, as we went to a fully volunteer organization and done that masterfully and handled some difficult things and some fun things, all with great poison and brought in, increased the assets of the organization significantly, brought in a lot of new people. So, thank you for your service to our community, certainly to our children. You've done very well, and we're very appreciative. You're a hard act to follow, but Julie also picked up the reins on the board of our children.
So, thank you for your kind of work. So, our employee campaign kicked off in August, and I just wanted to show the history of the employee campaign. In two thousand fourteen, that was the previous administrator ran that campaign. We did well with twenty thousand three oh eight, three hundred and ninety-seven employees. Last year, we continued that kind of plan and increased a little bit in donations, but four hundred and sixty-eight employees. Previously, what we would do is actually go out and talk to the different campuses, and we would usually on Wednesday and meet with the teachers. And so, we changed that this year, and we focused directly on coordinator for the campus. Met with them, gave them all the community aid, all the updates, and let them present to the schools, and it worked really well. We increased our O E participation up to five oh five, twenty-two thousand dollars in donations. We're happy with that change. In October, we had a red carpet event. We had fifty-three thousand dollars in revenue. It was held out of Tin Rock this year, and the owners of Tin Rock actually attended our event. They gave us a great discount on the room and want to be more involved next year. We're happy to get into all we're doing out there. We had three MCs. We had Chief Floyd Mitchell, who is the chief of police for Temple. We had Chief Ellis, Belton PD and Chief of Police, and then Rissa Shaw with KCEN. So, those of you that were there, it was great times. Funny, funny, breezy there as MCs. Our teacher grants, we just got through awarding those on December 6th, and we visited ten different campuses. They ranged from a request and an approval of a hundred and eighty dollars all the way up to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. The one hundred and eighty dollars was for incubator for chicken eggs. And the, another interesting was Pam Shulock with Miller Heights. The fifteen hundred and seventy-three dollars was a elementary music curriculum for ukuleles. And it'll be all grade levels. And then the nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine was called I Can Show You the World. It's a Google software with Google goggles and visual reality, virtual reality. And so, the students can visit hundreds of different destinations across the world. And that'll be another all-grade level. Our paraprofessional grants, we had ten requests. All ten were granted, there's six hundred dollars to help fund their education. We were happy to give those out. Couple of pictures of the prize patrol. We attended, we visited each of the classes. It surprised the teachers and the kids really, get a kick out of the teachers receiving those awards. And then some updates to end the presentation. If you'll remember, I talked to you about the Academic Works Online Scholarship Application. Well, we've got the software. It's live in January, so this next, starting in February and March, when the students can apply for their scholarships, it'll all be online. All our, all our committee that will look at those can go right online and they'll keep track of all that. It also gives a place for the donors. I have a donor page, so the students applying can see more clearly who's giving those scholarships. So, we've gone, we've gone through with all the donors and are updating all their information and putting pictures on the software. And we took a leak with Bank and we awarded, we applied for E. Rhodes and we own Carpenter Foundation Grant for twenty-six thousand dollars. It refunded the cost of three years of the software, and we got noticed and we got approved for that. So, we're excited to have that grant. And then, just to give you an update on donor gifts, this is in addition to the regular scholarships that are given. This end of the year, we've brought in ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars in extra donor donations. A large one of sixty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand, four thousand, twenty-five hundreds. So, constantly working to try to improve that, and the donors seem to be happy with what was added with the donation. I think that's all. That's all. And so, I'll open up to any questions if you have those, and then if not, appreciate the time, appreciate, appreciate serving on the board.
Robert, again, I just want to thank you that I think as you ended with those donor gifts, one of the things, having been involved with these for a number of years, one of the things I've seen is the way that you work with our donors and supported them and given them an opportunity to be engaged and see what's happening here. We have a number of our alumni and people in the community who want to be invested in our school district, and so we've seen that not only from new members coming onto the board and serving in that role, but the level of donor, the level of gifts coming in from those donors has been astounding. So, thank you for, for making that happen, for facilitating that, for leading a really tremendous group of volunteers, making a difference for our school district. We do appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions for Robert? We thank you. We appreciate you. Look forward to next year. We do. Don't let Julie come give the report, though, but you're welcome at our meeting, meeting time. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. I didn't see that anybody had signed up, anybody wishing to address the board. Seeing no takers, we'll move to consent agenda. Any board members have any items to pull from the consent agenda before discussion? Hearing them, let me identify those items that have been submitted since November fourteenth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting. The unauthorized financial report, the month ending November thirtieth, twenty sixteen. We have the gift grants, the requests of less than a thousand dollars. That's on, right there on the screen. We're very appreciative of those folks for those donations, though, do not require our board approval. We have two donations out of the revenues grants from private sources. The Belton Education Richard Foundation funds that Robert just described. That's, again, the forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-one cents in teacher grants, and then five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in paraprofessional continuing edge grants, total of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents for me. Very appreciative of that. Lakewood Elementary has donated ten thousand dollars for I-Cads and equipment produced in the lower grades. We have the Cooperative Purchasing Program fee report. That's a report only, gives us that annual report of, of those programs. Inter-local Agreement with Education Service Center Region Eighteen for the purchase of products or services. The Interlocal Agreement with Education Service Center Region Eleven for the purchase of products or services. We have the Annual Legal Services Retainer Agreement between Walsh, Dyango, St. Ringo, Russo, and Kyle, DC, and Belton ISD. And then the Concussion Oversight Team members, and we are thankful to those folks and their willingness to serve. There are motions to approve the consent agenda. Have Mr. Norwood, Secretary of Defense, on the floor. Motion raised hand. Cassidy Anaslee, attendance report.
Okay, I have three items for you this evening. The first one is in regards to elementary and secondary academic UIL. This past Saturday, a total of four hundred and forty-five elementary students from all nine of our elementary schools participated in our district UIL competition at Lakewood Elementary. In addition to that, we had almost two hundred and fifty students who submitted an art project in the competition as, as well. Some of the events that we held are typical events for us, such as art memory chess, creative writing, dictionary, listening, music memory, ready writing, number sense, oral reading, spelling, and storytelling. You may have heard of personal children. Don't tell them against us in the check line. And of course, or you may have previously as well. We have approximately a hundred and twenty-four staff members at the elementary level who serve as coaches, directors, judges, campus coordinators, and event directors. And so, we just want to thank our teachers who coach our students in those events and work with them before or after school. Our academic UIL program is really a great opportunity for our students to participate in academic contests and really to excel in their areas of strength. It's been a great program for Belton ISD. At the elementary campus, our principals will honor the students who placed in first through sixth place at their faculty campuses. At the middle school level, pre, prior to the weekend, prior to elementary, our students participated at North Belton Middle School. We had three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty students participating, and our students came from Belton, all three Belton Middle Schools, as well as Midway ISD's Middle School. And we had events such as art, calculator applications, dictionary, editorial writing, listening, math, math, graphs and charts, music memory, number sense, oral reading, ready writing, science, social studies, and spelling there. And that took about sixty staff members who were also coaches, judges, campus coordinators, and then directors. And North Belton Middle School was the overall winner of the middle school competition this year. There were, there were some staff members that I would recognize that probably not fall here, maybe Sam is, Sam Wong's. Sam here?
No.
No, Sam's not here, but Sam is our coordinator this year. And then we have some others who are really, especially our Sam Wong, Tommy Saline, and Amanda Crowe. So, I just want to appreciate them. For all update presentations, I want to thank you for being able to have been able to attend one over the last couple of weeks. I, we did that differently this year, and I was very pleased, have been very pleased with the way that those sessions have gone, especially with the level of interaction that I've been able to have with our staff members and really just with an open Q and A process that was a little bit twisted today as well. We had, we had some places where we had some really nice dialogue with staff members. And so, I appreciate you all for coming and supporting, and I want to let you know that the staff appreciates you, and they appreciate the Christmas gifts, the lunchboxes that were given to the board and the administration.
And they had really good questions?
They had great questions. We've had, we've had a lot of good dialogue about the twenty twenty-five plan, the upcoming legislative session, some particular program questions. Our bus drivers had lots of questions, and it was really great.
We have three more of those this week coming up, so if anybody has, hasn't had a chance to do that, wants to join in on the perfect activity by the hour.
Tomorrow and Wednesday afternoon. There's one tomorrow that's combined at Chisholm, I believe, in my staff meeting tomorrow, I think, at Chisholm Trail Elementary. And then on Wednesday, we have Southwest Elementary and South Belton's in the afternoon. So, if you want to come, just let me know. I'll, I'll get you the time for that. Maybe I don't have a calendar on me. Any thoughts or comments about how those have been, how many of you was there?
I think they're really engaging. The format is, it's quick to the point, but yet it's discussing things in a personal manner. And so, I think the feedback from watching the staff rap to kind of your answers and the administrative answers has worked really well.
Okay. And then last, I have a legislative update. Just wanted to let you know some things that we're communicating as we head into the legislative session, and the things that I have been focused on are really three. First is the A through F accountability system, and you may have seen the communication that I sent out to all staff via email with my thoughts about that ranking system. But basically, that's the new accountability system that the legislature passed during the last legislative session, which is assigning a letter grade of A through F to our campuses into the district. And we are just getting the indicators for that system, but it looks like it's more of a sentence. It's focused heavily on STAR, with a couple of additional indicators included. We don't have the methodology to know how to predict how we might rate, and we know we're expecting some initial ratings to come out soon on that, but we just continue to want to focus on our students' success in a more holistic approach. And so, we know our kids are warm in one test on one day, and they're doing some great things in all of our programs. And so, what my message to the staff has been is to not give it too much significance. And we, we, we're weary of these types of systems. This one is particularly going to be a challenge for us because there is a lot of value associated with an A, B, and C, D, or F, with people's personal experiences. And, and so, we're troubled by it, and we'll be pushing back on that.
Sure. Well, it's a flawed system because it would take as much force to give any student one grade per school.
Absolutely.
And so, it's ridiculous to give one school with, filled with multiple grades and any students one grade. It makes no sense. So, our great legislature is F.
Yes.
Fail the interval. So, I, I say that, and I want to thank you for your email out to our staff and your encouragement to the staff. I'm sure we'll do well. We do well on standardized tests. Our students do well. Our staff do well on that. But regardless of what that says, it's still an artificial measure, and it doesn't adequately and adequately reflect what's going on in our school.
Yeah, it only measures quite a certain amount. And so, to say that a school is a certain degree based on one single measurement is really meaningless. And, and there were, the best thing we were that from the last week was the orchestra. And you got to the chamber orchestra at the high school level, and you heard the students performing the ukulele. It was just. So, we'll keep, we want to keep sharing that message. Tasby has taken that up as well. We've got some feedback by some of us superintendents earlier in the year in a planning session with Tasby, and one of the things that they're doing is to release a resolution about the new P through F system, and we will bring that to you in January and ask you to put that on our board and our community. The second thing that we're talking about are education savings accounts, our vouchers. The voucher system has been a hot topic in the legislative session, it's been our legislative session for many years, and we are opposed to vouchers. We're opposed to converting public funds away to private schools, and we are opposed to privatization of school in general, especially calling our students back to our public schools. We want schools that are all-inclusive, and so, we will be pushing back on that as well. And then the last one to watch, and there'll be lots of things to watch. There's been, there's been more conversation already about the upcoming legislative session, and we'll share some more as we go along. The last one for tonight is just to keep an eye on the funding models. And we are opposed to privatization of school in general, especially calling our students right to our public schools. We want schools that are all inclusive. And so we will be pushing back on that as well. And then the last one to watch, and there'll be lots of things to watch. There've been, there's been more conversation already about the upcoming legislative session. And we'll share some more as we go along. Last one for tonight is just to keep an eye on the funding models and projections that will come out for this session. And I'll just tell you, we haven't heard anything positive in this regard. And as we approach this session, and we are discouraged by that. As you know, in 2011, the legislature cut school funding over five billion dollars. Valton ISD has five million dollars. And we still haven't been able to cut from those cuts back in 2011. So here with ours, six years later, we're still behind. So those are the things that we'll, we'll be paying attention to. And I know you'll have some other things as well that are important that we'll follow and talk about. We'll be happy to provide information about that process.
This isn't on the, on the legislative note. I just wanted to mention, some of us went to the Texas Tribune, a conversation or event at Temple College with Hugh Shine and Don Buckingham, our representative of life and Senator-elect. And I, I'm going to practice this by saying, there's a phenomenon going on in politics nationally that if you say something often enough, loud enough, people will believe it, whether it's got any basis in fact. And Senator Buckingham made a statement again at that, at that Texas Tribune event that we spend too much money on administration and public education. Well, the facts are, we spend less than three percent of our budget, which is pretty common for school districts in Texas. That's one of those myths that is perpetuated by those who want to say there's problems in public education. It's a myth. The facts are clear. Clearly refute that, but people continue to use that kind of faulty statement to promote an agenda. And I think as this legislative agenda is upcoming, certainly I want to, we want to give support and help to Senator-elect Buckingham to help educate her on the things that she isn't aware of. But we're going to have to confront that with our public and make sure that people understand that the things they hear aren't necessarily factually best. And so the myths are rampant, and we need to be truth tellers every chance we get it. So that's an example of one. I tweeted out a, how our dollar is spent earlier this evening, and how help prepared for is based on our audited budget numbers that we're about to get to here shortly. But we'll be using that again to help tell the truth that our, certainly the majority of our funds go to the classroom and support the tech libraries. Anyway, I'll, I'll get off the legislative stuff. I'll have a lot more to say about the legislative version is, as we get closer to that, that'll be, that'll be, I'm into that sort of thing. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So let's talk about District of Innovation Plan. That's something you've been talking to us about for a while. We passed a, a resolution to begin looking at that in form of committee.
Yes, you all passed a resolution on February the nineteenth, allowing us to explore the process of becoming the District of Innovation. And we've been busy working through that process since you passed that resolution. And then, of course, we had a public hearing in October, and you were part in our committee in October. Not only have, has a committee been working already, but we've also had three sessions, or three opportunities to discuss District of Innovation with our DEWIC committee. So tonight, we want to bring you the first reading of our District of Innovation Plan. And I will remind you that this is a local plan. The intent was for, for us to develop it locally, for it to be approved by the school board for a period of up to five years. And so we'd like to read that with you, just, I'll summarize it, but share that with you this evening as a first reading. And then we're going to ask DEWIC for approval in January. We'll bring that back for a public hearing in January, and then last of all, to print it in February. So there's a lot of time allowed in this process for conversation. And I tried to have a conversation with our staff about the District of Innovation Plan as I've gone out to the fall update sessions as well. First, I would like to recognize some of our employees who participated. We had, I had a great response. I talked about District of Innovation in the DEWIC committee, and I had probably nine teachers who volunteered and wanted to serve on the committee, and you all approved them. And so if you've served, would you see them be recognized?
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
And, and a board member.
And a board member, Sue. We appreciate Sue for participating on the committee this week.
That was a parent, I mean, a parent first, board member second.
Yes, so it was an interesting process. We started with just a conversation about what our committee members thought District of Innovation meant. And of course, we were, we were all over the place because the title is a business leading to what the intent is. And the intent is to ask for exceptions from the Texas Education Code for things that charter schools don't have to do. And, but I'll tell you that our committee took it very seriously, and we know some very innovative things in our plan. I'm very proud of the work that was done and how far we came. And these guys pushed me, I'll tell you that. They pushed us to make it better and better. And so I'm really proud of that. And, and I feel like they came to be able to learn to do good things for our kids. So there are three things we want to do. The first is to ask for an exception on teacher certification. And we want to do that in a very small way, in a very specified area in the business and industry career and technical education program. We have a number, to say handful of positions where we have a hard time recruiting teachers and finding certified teachers or finding people with bachelor's degrees who can do those jobs. And we saw this with our mill and cabinetry position most recently, where we could find folks who had been in the industry, who were very talented and had the ability to teach the courses, but they didn't have, they weren't certainly weren't teacher certified and they didn't have bachelor's degrees. So we couldn't hire them. You currently have to have teacher certification, and if you have a bachelor's degree, then you can sign him up with a local teaching permit to get your certification. Then you still have to pay three to five thousand dollars depending on program that you sign up for. And then you have to go take the classes and get yourself certified. And so sometimes we, we could find applicants, but then they were making less money to be a teacher, and they didn't want to spend money to get the certification, and they certainly didn't want to spend time on it. So we've identified five positions that we foresee that if we were to lose our teacher, then it would be, it would be difficult to find folks. That would be in law enforcement, health science, and I'm on page fifty-four, the packet, culinary arts, construction trades, and automotive technology. And so what we would like to do is to hire folks who would need the work-based experience and would be eligible for the teacher certification program. But we want to not have them have to put that, we want to put them to work. We would not offer a contract for those positions. Those would be at-will employees. And we would not want to have, and there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with this process to TDA, and we do not want to have to submit that paperwork as well. So that would be our local innovative hiring teachers, five positions, or five different positions. And Amanda Nissar was very helpful in this conversation as, as was talking. Did I get it right, Amanda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Any questions about that one?
Sense.
Okay, the next one is, this is our most innovative section, minimum attendance for class credit or final grade. So there are a couple of things we want to do to expand upon our digital learning initiative that would not have students in class for ninety percent of the days that the class is offered. So that's where the exception would come in. The first one would be an online, online dual credit courses. The University of Texas Permian Basin, in Insha, Insha, and in Monhu, with UT, University of Texas Permian Basin. And our students would, you know, take that course at home, first or last period, or in a designated place in the school day on campus where they are assigned and attendance is taken. And that would be an independent class for them. And there'd be no staff support, but students would be able to do that their junior and senior year independently in an online environment. So that, that gives us some more, that allows us some flexibility for students who have schedule conflicts, and opens up some more dual credit courses for our students. And then the, the next one in that area is, is that we would develop our own online or blended learning course in a core content area. We would pilot that this next school year for junior or senior level class. And this one would be, delivered in such a way that the teacher has some flexibility to have students in the classroom, or for students to be able to be turned loose to go home and work independently. So as a teacher, I might say, you come to class on Mondays and Wednesdays, but I might be tutoring, as I would be there to support five days a week. You'd still be scheduled into my class. And I might be doing tutorials or small group work on the other days. So again, some flexible arrangement for the students, but also allow some flexibility for the teacher to work with different small groups or individuals. And, and, and we hope our students practice being independent before they head to college and they're on their own.
That's going to take a unique student and a unique teacher.
It is.
Hold that off. That's not just the ordinary average.
It is. Do you have identified a couple of teachers, visited with them to see what they think? Because I've spoken to Dr. Reese, I keep here, Push Cavali for this, this is the first students of Miss Houston. And I, you could ask them any questions at all, but they're, they had a conversation with students, with students and with other staff members. There's some interest in it.
You got some students ready to go.
And so we're, that's the, they kind of learned immediately.
It's certainly gives you to a different level of learning than traditional.
We saw this in Tulsa Union a couple of years ago when we made that visit out to the school. We saw this kind of blended in the learning model, and we really thought that was pretty neat.
I mean, that's used at upward level college level, with college students, but on the upper level, that, that's asking a lot of our students.
Yes.
But we have some, they're ready to speak.
Want to talk?
Yeah.
Would, would we be able to transition them back into a classroom setting if needed? I mean, obviously, I love online learning, and I think it was great for me. And teaching it is very unique, but it takes a lot of independence and a lot of structure and, you know, initiative. And I think some are going to learn quickly, but maybe that's not what they're capable of, or that's not their learning style. And so I just wondered how we would transition them back into a regular end classroom.
Sure. So we, we talked about that. We would, we would have other sections of that same course offered the same period so that they could transition back into a classroom if they weren't successful. However, this is not, this particular part of the plan is not turning them loose and putting them on their own. This is, we're going to be there to support you. And so the idea is that we don't let you fail, right? You have, you, you are available to your teacher five days a week, and your teacher, if you are failing, your teacher may not even come to your work. And there's more time for tutorials, so it could be.
It's something where there's even more support than.
Would be more support. And it's, it's a different, it's a little bit, you know, what we saw, this one is different than what we saw in Tulsa, and they're designing the course. And the curriculum on there, they purchased an online program that students took the course and actually scheduled them to the classroom for the teacher for support. And this one is, the teacher is actually designing the course. So we'd like to pilot that, see how that goes. This is.
And the ones from UTPV are not going to be supported. So would they take an F? Would they fail? Or is that going to go on their transcript for us?
Yeah, so they would, you would not get credit unless you mastered the course. But I don't know if they failed to help you handle it.
So we currently have that situation now where if a student takes a course from Temple College and they fail the first semester, then we have to find a way to intervene for them to get that first semester credit. So like English, then you would find a way to pick up that credit the second semester.
It'll be the same.
So it's, it's going to be the same thing.
Does professors communicate well with us in regards to the students?
With our current partnerships, their view is that a student is a college student with student rights, and they don't share those grades except for at some marking, tech grading periods. However, my understanding with UTPV is that they do have a portal, so they have students wait that off, and we can keep better touch on that. Parents also have a different level of access with UTPV than they do our current partners.
Do you know what district starting program they utilize? Is it Blackboard or?
Oh, I should know that.
Oh, that's okay. You can, you can.
So.
I think it's Blackboard.
I think, Blackboard is what they were using. But with, with the goal of this, we, our goal is to have a proctor here that we would assign to, to touch base with the student and help them.
It just gets kind of, you know.
It is, and it's hard because.
It's great, it's amazing. And I think it's wonderful that we're doing it. I'm so supportive.
It is, it will be a shift for us.
And parents will know what to expect. So it just gets a little.
But again, this is a structured guided, so it actually is better anyways. The potential support is very regular.
It is, and we, we think it's working fine.
Yeah.
And it's a lot flexible.
I agree.
And they're doing, some are working, some are, they want some extracurricular activities, and they want physical to work at more convenient times for them. And so, and I think it's worth doing, and then at least piloting and seeing how, how goes. With both of those initiatives under that minimum attendance for class credit or final grade, the one thing that we could not do had to do with minutes of instruction. So you have to be in class two hundred and forty minutes a day to be counted present for attendance at the high school level, and that's five class periods. So our kids are participating in these programs, still have to have five class periods of our traditional, so that we get the attendance accounted for for them. And they will not let you have an extension for that. We hope you might get away with that.
District of Innovation has some.
It has some limitations, yes. Okay. Any questions about that extension? All right. And the last one was the one I, that caused us to get started on the District of Innovation process, and that's the first day of instruction. So currently, the legislature has required that we not start school for fourth Monday in August. And when we took a look at next year's school calendar, school, our, our fourth Monday fell on August the twenty-eighth, which is really late. And when we started putting the calendar together, we could see very quickly that we would end up into June, well beyond Memorial Day, unless we gave up pretty much everything within that calendar to provide some breaks and some professional development, and we do want to do that. So we're close to Fort Hood, and we, we want to honor some of those federal holidays, our students and their families, who want to honor our philosophy of professional development. And we, we've grown accustomed to, to meet Christmas break, and we, thanks to you now for the last couple of years. And to fit all of that in, we need to start before August the twenty-first. So we're asking that we kind of start school earlier and prior to the fourth Monday in August, and, and that's it. And that's the exception there is.
So therefore, we can end earlier.
So therefore, we can end earlier, or we can do it within the calendar. The calendar process, indeed, we still are on the calendar process. There really aren't that many decisions that we make because we're so heavily restricted by testing and holidays and start of the legislative requirements. And so this gives us a tad bit more flexibility, not even a whole lot, but it does give us some. And so that is it. That's our, that's our plan. We will bring it back for a public hearing in January. And then thank you for that G for approval.
I'm not taking any action, but this is informational. Sue, a quick call on you. You served on the committee. You can add.
I did. I'm circling the lap, I had that opportunity. This was a very well thought out process from being able to.
This was a very well thought out process from being able to look at other districts' proposed plans from pickup until the draft. These aren't just words on a piece of paper. These are words and plans and ideas that were read, discussed, and really wordsmithed. I mean, this was, you know, you got a lot of value from teachers, other people out in the community. This was a very well thought out process. So I was unfortunately left over the morning too.
Thank you for the service on that. Y'all have anything you want to add?
I would just say this, that I think that the districts move towards one-on-one I T ads and those kinds of things that kind of give a shadow towards some of that distance learning already. Kids are able to come in on Apollo and if they're sick, they can see what's happening in a classroom at that moment anyways or take care of things on home room. So I think the district's done a great job in laying the foundation for that next step. So I don't think that parents will be quite as taken aback when it comes to encountering this type of classroom setting because the district's already been moving towards that anyways. And so it's going to, I think it will mesh really well.
That's a great point.
And that's a good point, and I just want to add that parents will have to get permission.
Yeah.
Not every student will do this, but.
That's a great point. I appreciate the boost that we've been honoring here and this is the next step. So that's a great way to look at it. Thank you. Anybody? Jim, you got anything? All right. Last call. Thank you on that. Well, okay, let's shift to our next innovative program. And I think it's really appropriate that this is next on our agenda is to consider memorandum of agreement with Darnell Army Medical Center for a school-based health center. This is an exciting innovative program that we don't need a plan of the District of Innovation plan, but wow, what a great opportunity. Tell us about it.
We've been giving a wonderful opportunity to improve healthcare accessibility for our adolescents. Going to military dependents. Dr. Daniel Childs came to see us in September. He's an adolescent pediatrician with Darnell Army Medical Center. And he came with a proposal to start a school-based health center. He had received a grant from the Army Medical Command from the System of Health Initiative. He was ready to come tonight, but he is right now waiting for his first one. So his boss is here, which is great. This is Colonel Chonka Croftail and she's the chief of the ethics at Darnell. So she'll be here to answer any questions if you might have. So just to summarize, Darnell is going to provide, they're going to provide a medical center establishment. It'll be located at Dalton High School. It will operate one half a week. They'll be there to evaluate and treat our military dependents. We're going to provide a small private room. We just need to have rainwater, lighting, and they're going to provide a physician, a nurse, or medical technician, equipment, supplies, needed medication. The paperwork and billing, they will do themselves, Darnell. Their direct benefit to the military families, as you can imagine, the parent will sign an authorization, so they're not going to need to come. So before transportation involved, the parent will need to be there. They will get notes about how the visit went. So it'll be convenient. The kids will lose.
They could come if they wanted to.
Yes, they can come. So decrease time to have it in this school, believe. They're going to be able to get physical exams, immunizations, attention to acute or chronic illnesses so that we can have some walk-in if we need to. Training for emotional or behavioral concerns, some pharmacy services. They will have a set amount of medications that they can distribute to the students, some lab specimen collection, and then of course referrals if they need specialized care. So this proposal's been presented to our district's school advisory council. And on that council, we actually have some military families and they were very excited about this. And so we received, are performing approval to proceed. So I'd like to see if you have any questions for our doctor or for us on this.
What, yes, the first question is, have you done this somewhere else or are we the first one? Or have I had to come up with this idea?
Sure. So this is the first time that there are all these, so this is not a unique program for the military. So for instance, in San Antonio, they have adolescent medicine fellowship. They have a school there, Cole High School, where they've been in school for many years, not to date myself, but since the late 90s, which is when I was there, they were doing a school-based help right there. When I was in Germany, we did a school-based help, like two happy season, that launched, which was great. And this really, part of the basis for, with what we're heading, we're going off of is the Maddy Army Medical Center, which is in here Tacoma. They are now about seven different schools. So they're in high schools and some middle schools and very successful there. So they've been out to see us and really are going to be once they're ready, talking us through it, helping us to be sure that we're making this very successfully. This is new for us here.
This is new for Darnell. And so this is the first school site for Darnell to go out?
Yes, and we're really excited about this.
Well, thank you for choosing us or I guess we said, we said, we said yes.
They said yes.
You know, and I don't want to let that go. That, this is a good example of our staff saying, well, it's good for kids. Let's think outside of the box and let's find something that's unique. And so I just want to commend everybody. High school staff certainly, our health services, everybody involved, and this is a great opportunity.
Let me tell you, our business people are thinking, you know, they are not ready quite to think outside this box, but.
It's a stretch.
It's a stretch, but I think really convenient things, right? Even if parents do come to the visit, so much time, but they should not miss.
Yeah.
It's cool, right? I mean, parents probably happy it's cool for every appointment they come to have a day at work.
Comes to, leaves their work, comes to the high school, makes their student, drives over, towards it, drives back. Yeah, this is terrific. Is this limited to just high school students or can other students not, other high school come to this?
If they can get there.
So parents could pick it up at another school near locally.
Sure, sure. You know, they would have to know about it. It's probably not to be advertised broadly elsewhere. I mean.
I was thinking, I've got a high school student who's here and I've also got a younger child that I may go bring them up.
So, you know, adolescent medicine, they prefer to take their twelve.
Sure.
This is our start. And I will tell you that we have patients getting out into the other areas. And if it works well in the adolescent realm, there's no reason that we can't have our general pediatrician see younger people at public health school.
That's.
Obviously, you want parents, right? Because children can't learn anything without themselves. But from an adolescent perspective, it's a very, you can write off school, take your school physical, corrupt primary education, you can prepare them right there. There's just a lot of that for everyone small.
What room are we using? Where are we going to?
We're actually going to ask for a teacher laying on the right behind the office area. It's a, it's a smaller one, but it's a great location. I think they'll have some confidence.
It's a half a day.
Half a day a week.
To start out, yes. But we're asking.
And I suspect that half a day will fill up.
You know, if we can fill it, then, you know, by all means, we could certainly come more. That's what we're saying, let's start out with a half a day. Because it'll take a while, I think, for words to get around that we're there and that we're available. And of course, it is for criteria beneficiaries, so, you know.
And so, so we're ready to go?
We're ready to go. Once it's approved, it'll give us a little bit of time to get the template into the computer system to be able to go. But really, once we have the go-ahead from you, we told our business operations people and they sent forty-five weeks.
And during that time, we'll work on promotions. So Kyle's already in the works with Clearbones to have promotions.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I'm just glad you can't see my kid.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know what we're going to hear is, oh.
Well, we, we have a former adolescent medicine doctor who's now Scott White. She would really like to start one for there, but obviously we have multiple curiosities.
Different, different ideas.
Ideas, but we could.
You know, I want to, I'm just going to add this tie-in. Our, the school district and the Belton Chamber of Commerce have worked really hard over the last several years to support our military families. And we work with them in doing some events we sponsor to be belted for military families each year, twice a year. And I think the outreach to those families is important because the needs for folks who are serving, certainly when they're serving overseas, it's worth, it's undeniable, but at any time. They need some extra support in our community. Or those who are choosing to live off post, they need some extra support from our community. They are our children, they are our families, but they're still military families. So this is a great partnership, another really neat way that Belton is stepping up and reaching out to support our military families. I'm very proud of that.
And like I said, we're really excited to be able to do this. We have good visions.
Well, I'm, we're excited to be part of that vision.
You can't tell.
So, so let's get out of the way so we can get this going. We need a motion to approve, I have motion to approve memorandum of agreement. Motion for Ms. Winkler, second for Ms. Dord. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion raised in hand? That passes again. Hope it can happen. Charlotte, thank you for your work on that. What a great opportunity to look forward. And I hope you'll give us some feedback back in a few months, you know, how it's going. And so we can celebrate the successes with you.
It makes all those other schools jealous.
And they, they live, that's a continual state for them, so we understand that.
Well, it's so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you being with us. And congratulations to the new dad.
Yes.
Okay, well, that was fun. Let's talk about new resources. Joe?
Sorry, this month, we have four recommendations for you. Elizabeth Moore is one of the individuals that we're recommending for our positions there at High Point. And she has a former Belton ASD student. She was actually in the main course this year. She has some. We also have four resignations that we received. We're working on two positions that were, working on certifications and graduation board. We'll bring those recommendations to you next month. And I'll keep this whole position, and we already have two positions.
Okay, good deal. So a motion to approve? Motion for this council, second for Ms. Winkler, all in favor of the motion raised in hand, passing this in hand, sleep. Ah, they're paying attention. They're referring to you. Okay, thank you. Okay, each year, each year, the board contracts with an external auditor to do an independent external audit of our finances and our financial services program. Paulo Lao is with us again this evening. Thank you. Paulo Lao is with the program in Phil, he conducted our annual audit. Paulo, we appreciate your work for us and thank you for being here this evening to bring us our audit report. This is important on me, obviously, we're required to do this by law, but it's important also because it gives us an outside look, independent look at what we're doing internally. We look at this monthly, but it gives us verification that we're on the right track in being good stewards of the process.
I'm Paul Lao, I'm Phil Brown, Phil. And I'm here today to present to you the annual financial report for this year 2016. You'll get to page two of this document. Basically, that is, this is where you can find our independent audit report. This is one of the few pages here that we're actually repopulating and drafting each and every word in this one. So when I'm here on page two, by our independent audit report, basically what this says, that we have audited some financial statements in accordance with governmental audit standards. This is what I'll generally accept it on these standards. And those standards require that the planning formally audit to obtain a reasonable assurance that these financial statements are securely correct. And I'm happy to say that we have heard an unmodified opinion. And an unmodified opinion is the highest opinion that can be given as well. And I just wanted to go through this report and point out to you a couple of items throughout this document so we can flip through the pages. First, you'll find on page five, you'll find the management's discussion and analysis of this report. And basically, within this management's discussion analysis, you'll find a lot of the narrative information referring to information about the financial statements. Sometimes, some people like to look at that type of information, the narrative format, rather than some people keep the balance sheet or the statement of revenues and expenditures. So that will provide you with some information as well. By flipping through, I wanted to turn your page to page sixteen. There on page sixteen, you'll find the balance sheet for the district in on the governmental funds, which is on a quantitative basis, other counting. You can see that here in particular, the general fund had a leading fund balance, the total fund balance, approximately twenty-five million dollars. Out of that, out of fund balance, you had some, some items that were actually committed by the board for construction, about twenty-seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then a couple of other assignments you can see within the general fund balance as well, a little bit more than four point five million dollars. Majority of that has been assigned or printed out to be spent on corporate housing construction projects as well. So you can see there, total unassigned fund balance is nineteen point six million dollars. The unassigned fund balance, the board decision on how to include that. Let me go through on page eighteen. You'll find the statement of revenues, changes in fund balance of the district. And you can see total revenues for the district, approximately a hundred and ten million dollars. Actually, the number of that. And the total expenditures were just under a hundred and ten million dollars. And you can see a total change in fund balance in all of the governmental funds with an increase in fund balance of approximately four point eight million dollars. And you can focus on the general fund or the general operating fund. You can see fund balance for that figure of a decrease, approximately three point six million dollars for this year 2016. Now, can we do the report a little bit more? And you'll find the notes, the financial statements beginning on page twenty-one. The notes of financial statements provide you some more detailed information about the numbers of the ten financial statements. Also, we discuss the due presentation and basis of accounting that the numbers are presented on. And there's a few items that I wanted to make sure that I pointed out to you. Some of the detailed information beginning on page thirty-one, regardless of capital assets. You can see how capital assets, how they're broken out into land, buildings, furniture, equipment. And the total balance is actually the cost of the district to purchase those items as well as the incremental appreciation of the like system as well. On page thirty-two, you will find notes holders beginning with long-term liabilities of the district. You can see at the end of the year, total capital leases, which were approximately forty dollars. And the majority of these capital leases, they were used to purchase buses and as well, you heard, you're purchasing. On page thirty-three, you can see the total principal amount of long-term debt that is outstanding at the end of fiscal year, which is approximately a hundred and twenty-three million dollars.
Well, remember, I just reminded you, these are good ones to go on here. And I do, because sometimes you'll get asked these kind of questions. I can never remember numbers, but I, this is where you can find it. This will be on the website. I don't know what the pages and the number. But yeah, that's a question we could ask.
And if you ever remember, in the fiscal year, the district did refund. A couple had two funded bonds. And you can see some narrative information about the refunded bonds on page thirty-five. You can see debt service payments were reduced by approximately two million dollars as a result of the refunded bonds.
That's a good year.
Yes. And on page forty-six, when you flip through to the budget actions table for the general fund, taking a look at this one, page forty-six. Taking a look at this, you can see that each one of the different functions that the district did, it's been, it's funny for the district, the management did not, it's been more than actually what the board requested. Each one of those different functions. It also goes to management, making sure that they follow the direction that the board has provided as well.
It's very important that we, as a governmental agency and responsible to the state, federal government, that we, that all of our expenditures are coded properly to. that we, that all of our expenditures are coded properly to, um, where they're appropriate. And that's part of.
That's right. That's one of the things that we focus a lot of attention on is classification of, um, the amounts that you do see in this report. For the revenues, how it's split out into two to three categories, but also to expenditures and how we're going to put out some different functions as well. Now, I'd like to turn your attention to, um, the federal awards section. And then this document that begins on page sixty-six. As I mentioned to you earlier, on, we, as part of this party, have you followed government audit standards? And basically, one of the things that those standards do, they require us to consider the internal controls of the district and whether or not those internal controls were detected in the year of the statements in the financial statements. And if we come across a situation, we felt like those processes would not detect something, you know, that caused material statements. These financial statements, we are required to bring that to your kitchen here. So I'm happy to say that we do not have a material weakness or some provisions to bring to your kitchen. And that just goes to, um, show you how management needs, um, putting processes and controls in place to make sure that when we come out here, it's not that we're finding, you know, old things here going wrong necessarily, but they are catching those themselves because things always don't work perfectly. So they are catching some, some items and then also too, you know, assessing the processes and having a vision. Very good. On page sixty-eight, you'll find our reports, the reports with uniform guidance. Uh, basically what this is, is this uniform guidance provides us, um, with information in order to looking at the federal programs that respect that was put into our districts. Now, page seventy, you will see, uh, the schedule of expenditure of federal awards. And basically what the schedule does is list out each one of the federal awards, um, that the district did expend in fiscal year 2016. And at the top of this page, you can see the largest program, um, that the district did have this year was the child nutrition cluster. And it's approximately three point seven million dollars the district did spend this year. And this is the program based on the risk assessment that we did that we focused on this year as well. And as a part of us focusing on this particular, um, area, I'm happy to say that we, they were able to render a lot of light of thinking for the federal awards and also too, we did not cross the type of internal controls that were required for those to. And scrolling through here, you can also see that the S J R O T C program that had expenditures relating to federal awards, uh, was sixty-eight thousand dollars. Obviously the program, this costs more because this is how much that's expended for, um, federal awards. As well as impact aid, approximately seventy-two thousand dollars into other larger, um, programs. You can see at the bottom of the page, the top of one clusters, which is one point four million dollars as the special, special education is one point six million dollars.
Those are questions that, and I know what you get asked, if I, somebody recently asked me how much money we got in that day money. And we, some of our neighboring districts get millions, millions of them. We were also all up all night. We get seventy-two thousand dollars, which is nice, but it's still seventy-two thousand dollars, not millions. We need a few more zeros in terms of, we like some of our neighbors, but, um, you know, and, and that R O T C program I found to be interesting, but no, except for right program for so many of our, our students. Uh, who are reversed for what third? Forty percent?
Seven.
Uh, something like that. Which is a nice, nice thing.
That's all it spends. It's, it's been about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars during R O T C. That's more than the staff.
Sure.
And then to look into page seventy-three, which I think this is one of the most important pages of the whole market very easily. But, um, basically this is a nice summary of the report. It says without an opinion of the business, the most financial statements, unmodified opinion. Uh, no, the business, the general, this is, um, as far as to the federal awards, we had no items to write here, written there as well. The federal for revenue of that this year, which is child nutrition. I thank everyone at the district for everything, um, that they provided us and the cooperation they give us as well. I think everyone did their very good job and we really appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions specific to the audit? This is obviously a, a really good report, very positive and, and indicates again what we've seen throughout the year in practice. There are, they did a great job managing our funds in an appropriate way and making sure that everything is properly coded appropriately, but it's really important for us to get an external view of that. And such a good report, uh, very positive reflection of our staff. Anybody have any questions, comments? Yeah. Let's first look at one of these different, it's a little different audit than what I've seen in other places. Okay. Um, well, I just want to add my, uh, thanks, Eric McKinnon, there's, um, there's Harry, uh, Deanna, that's out there somewhere.
Carol's here.
And Carol's out there. Oh, there's Carol. I see. Thank you. Thank you for what you all do every day to, uh, be good stewards of, of our public trust. And we are trustees and ultimately that means we are trustees for public funds. Um, and this audit report certainly helps, um, verify for us that we are being good stewards of public trust. So thank you for the work you do every day, hard work, the, the very detailed work that you do to, uh, to result in this kind of reporting. And again, Paul, uh, thanks to you for working with our staff and for being available to us, uh, as a board in this regard. Anybody have any last questions? If there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the audit presented. Have a motion, this is for others and a second for Mr. Cameron. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion right in hand. That passes unanimously. Six, uh, six, uh, for the record, Mike Callen had to step out for a little bit. He will return a little bit later, but was not here for that. Thank you, Paul. We appreciate you. What are y'all doing? Who's still on page thirty-three? Why are we not in the time for reading here?
I read that.
It's because it's Spanish.
Oh, I got you. You're planning it.
No, he needs the baby version. Audit for dummies.
Oh, it'd be nice. Okay. Nice. Thank you. This is a, this is a really good time to transition. So we'd like to, uh, take up contract, uh, contract for our architectural services for our new elementary school.
Yes, um, I'll just take that, this item from here tonight. Um, we'd like to ask you to approve the contract with O'Callen Robertson Architects for architectural services for a new elementary school. So as we, um, have worked with O'Callen Robertson extensively over the last several weeks, a couple of months now, um, to plan for the high school project, um, it has really become apparent to us that due to the size and scope of our project, um, that we cannot plan our elementary projects separate from that. Um, and so we want to merge those projects with one architect so that we can, um, have better coordination. And, and we've been very impressed with O'Callen Robertson. So I did this with the W R A. They're very gracious and, um, uh, we terminated the contract for the elementary school project. So we'd like to shift to O'Callen Robertson.
Well, I'm glad to hear that actually. Uh, certainly, uh, we've been very, very impressed from our level of the questions that we've received. And I think you mentioned, uh, coordination, but I think it's an efficiency issue also.
It really is. It's pretty sad.
You don't have to double, do double the meetings and, and all. So there's some efficiencies for our folks here, uh, in terms of doing so.
Well, definitely.
For us.
Definitely improve our, um, efficiencies and, um, and give us some time back.
Derek, anything more to do?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, have recommendations. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Cameron?
Sure.
Have a motion for Mr. Cameron, second for Mr. Crowder. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion right in hand. That passes unanimously. So thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate y'all's willingness to take on additional projects and do more, more work. Well, while we're on more work, it's your turn. Derek, come make it happen and, and all crew. Y'all come, come on up and talk to us about, um, where we are in our planning for high school. Because Mr. Brother says the corruption number is down there. He's got to figure it out.
Well, good. I'm glad, uh, as Dr. McKinnon said, we have been working with the district, uh, for the past several months, after years. Here, but on the high school, just the last couple of months. And this presentation really is the culmination of the effort of those months, including the building tours, meetings that we've had, really kind of programming and planning, uh, the future of the federal I S D. Along with that vision, um, five. And so joining me here tonight is Rebecca Richter, who's an architect, educational specialist. She's been here with the process. And then as well as Kim Crocker, the principal and our C O O, uh, who really specializes in, uh, construction administration. And so we've got a wealth of information.
Oh, real?
Yes. Uh, there's about fifty slides, uh, so it's going to take a, a good little while to go through. Uh, and they're going to help me along the way to go through and present on the different respective topics.
Yeah. And I know, let me just preface this by saying, we, we kind of knew in planning our agenda that this was going to be a real, uh, intensive, lengthy part of our agenda tonight. But what we're doing in terms of planning for this second conference, the price of the heat, and it is consuming a lot of our time and a lot of our attention it needs to. And so it's a good use of our time. So don't apologize for that. Uh, I would just tell you, thank you for your thoroughness in providing that you can do this ahead of time. And then the plan to walk us through this gently.
Absolutely.
Because this is a big deal for us.
It is. And it's a big deal for us. We're glad to be part of the process for high schools as well as the elementary schools. We're excited about that. So tonight, we are going to cover five, five main items. Uh, we're going to kind of touch base real briefly on what we discussed last time. Uh, and then we're going to really focus in on the architectural program, which is talking about how large is the high school? What kind of spaces that we have, how large they are, what, what all is going into that project? Talk about anticipated building costs. So when we see, talk about things that we see here in the industry. Uh, how, how is it that the costs are occurring and how does that figure into the line project now? Uh, again, talk about construction delivery methods, uh, and the potential way to procure the work. Uh, and then finally talk about the bond and schedule, uh, is, uh, what is the plan in twenty twenty-two? If the bank will, in twenty twenty-five happen and what are some options there, uh, along the way? Uh, so there's a lot of information. We're going to be opportunities to ask questions, but please feel free to interrupt any point. Uh, and we'll get those questions answered. Great. So with that, uh, moving back to our November presentation about potential bond scenarios. Uh, that was our opportunity really to help, uh, start intersecting demographics, funding and facilities. Uh, and what are those considerations as a board? Uh, do you really want to consider kind of as you move forward? Uh, and so we really kind of delved into the vision as we look out even, you know, thirty years. Uh, but it's not, we're really going to focus in on that facilities question and how can you kind of tweak that from a size, cost, schedule standpoint to help fit into those other elements that y'all are considering here as we move forward. Uh, so in that thirty-year facility impact, we talked about elementary school, middle school and high school, uh, needs and how that's going to, uh, impact this year over thirty years, each one of those little red dots, uh, being a need to address capacity within the district, uh, from a total capacity standpoint.
Uh, we started. You know what? Before you get off that slide, I, I really liked this, uh, slide. It scared me last month when you put it up. In a lot of ways, it was, it was pretty impactful, but I, but I, uh, and it says the impact. But I, but I've really gotten to where I liked it a lot. I've spent some time looking at it and thinking about it and thinking. We, we talked about our roadmap to twenty twenty-five, but that's just the first slice. And I appreciate the, the pulling back for a bigger view of where we're heading because we can't just limit our view to what happens between now and twenty twenty-five. It does go beyond. And, uh, for example, we've talked a lot about that second elementary school is going to come on right at the end of that timeframe. And we just need to know that. We need to be planning for that. So in reality, while the twenty twenty-five plan has one elementary and one high school, our vision, our facility planning is this. And, and I keep pointing, there's a screen behind you. It's a little bit of a look at, but, um, and we need to think in terms of that, that much bigger than just the first calling issue. So I really appreciate this, this slide, this sheet. Uh, it's been helpful to me to, to keep in mind what we're talking about, but the bigger picture of where we're going. And, and as we've talked about as a board, we need to be thinking well ahead and on into the future. So, so thank you for that.
And you will recall last time when we talked specifically at the high school level, the, the dots along the bottom represent a twenty-five hundred a student high school capacity. So as we talk about looking at something smaller, you get more frequent red dots running along the way, making, you know, facilities, uh, like. Uh, and so then translating from, from that outlook over the last thirty years, uh, and then moving into, you know, this year and kind of moving forward, the district did potentially start to discuss the three bond scenarios. And we had aligned projects with those three bond scenarios. So you'll see the hundred at the very bottom, the hundred and fifty million, the hundred and twenty-seven, and the ninety-nine million. And those are represented the high and the X where it's below. Uh, one thing that we've added this time, you'll see here throughout the presentation are the three dots above, B, C and D. And so those relate as we move through the entire presentation, the options, so you can see kind of how they translate in terms of cost, in terms of schedule, those things, uh, throughout the presentation. So as we identified, uh, on the B, C and D options, the various facility sizes for the comprehensive high school, which will lead to, represent the total project cost there, we started identifying how, how is it that we receive those costs? And there were the four main strategies for minimizing the facility size, about reducing what we're building on May one. Minimizing first cost, uh, through materials and systems, uh, so maybe changing, choosing a different mechanical system or a different roof system, uh, building sooner to minimize inflation, or potentially even calling for a bond in May, uh, along the way. And so the rest of the presentation really focuses in heavily on those four items to make sure that we're making the right decisions along that entire process. Uh, and then so in the background, uh, to that, we developed in at the high school level, those three options. Again, the red represents the total project cost. And we started moving into building sizes, uh, there. So the B option was three hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet. C was three hundred and twenty-five and D was two hundred and fifty thousand. And that really represented a lot of work on the facility program side about how is it that we can build a high school facility that fits within that, those square footage, those requirements. Uh, and so the next segment really kind of jumps deep into that portion of the project about the architectural program. And, and so through the process, and Rebecca's going to jump in here, we identified, started with the ideal program for Belton I S D. About kind of the wish list, if we built our ideal high school, what would it be? We got all those elements and we started looking at how is it that we can fit within those three buckets of pride? You know, and we've gone through and tweaked that. And I think as you go through the presentation, uh, there's two key things to pay attention to. Uh, as you go through, make a decision. One, there are changes that we're making for, uh, changes in the program and different levels of program that you can change later, like the number of classrooms. Today you may only build forty classrooms. You can always come back and build ten more. There are other changes that I would consider irreversible in terms of you may build a classroom at seven hundred square or feet today. We can't come back and make them eight hundred and fifty later. And so there are choices down the line that you'll see as we go through this presentation, that those are identified, meaning the way that as you get further or smaller square footage, there are more of those changes down the line. So with that, I'll turn it over Rebecca to give you an overview of the process and go through the details of those program options.
All right. I'm going to start with, uh, just the process of what we've been to today, through today. So we started with the, the roadmap, twenty twenty-five, and with the understanding that the site is going to be High Point Elementary and the, and then the proportion of Belton I S D. And our process thus far has been, we've been through four executive project committee meetings, which have really been two to four hour workshops. And we've been through user group meetings with ten departments, uh, and capturing about forty-nine of staff with those, uh, with those meetings. We toured, uh, five regional high schools and we toured additional ones. We toured five regional high schools and we toured additional ones virtually, including the Tulsa Union and just an array of different schools in more limited ways.
We talked about Tulsa because Brady's asking about Tulsa, or commented that that was interesting. But Tulsa, we saw, we talked about some distributed food service there that we thought was interesting when we visited and also some of the common spaces for students that we really liked. So we asked them to reconsider that as well.
Yeah, it was an interesting, interesting school to study. We also went through utilization studies. That means we took a careful look at Belton High School and Belton High School VHS 9. You see the bottom, just how are those schools being used right now for the CTE programs, for the science programs? And just try to understand those as thoroughly as we could. And we also did some comparisons of regional high schools. And we compared Tomlin High School, Leander ISB, we looked at my passes, we looked at an array of different types of high schools. And with all of that, we identified some key strategies and some, those being, let's run through them quickly. The student capacity being 2,500. And the classrooms being, we started with 850 square feet. And we got to that number, understanding that there was an average of 30 students per classroom. And TEA guidelines, it goes 28 square feet per person. So 840, 850 square feet is how we got there. And learning communities, there were all more meetings and stuff. It was discussed that that would be an important component of the school. And within those learning communities, breakout spaces for classroom sizes, 30 students, medium size, six to eight students, and some smaller size, three to four students. Some of those, we saw successful enclosed spaces, very classic spaces. We saw just flow in, flow out, no walls at all, just the variety of spaces. And most of those were supported with different types of furniture, from high top tables, that's all seating, to regular furniture. And building efficiency, well, we looked at that, let me pop that up to staff think tanks. Staff think tanks are offices that support the classrooms where the teachers actually office in these think tanks. And there are space within those think tanks for teacher cooperation. There's for storage and restrooms and those types of facilities. And the ones that we felt were most successful is the ones that were carefully positioned to where they could look into the learning communities and that they could really see the students. It was just that natural surveillance was, was good on the teachers' end and the students'.
So that's similar to what we have at UTEC.
Yes, yes.
And what they have, however, what we saw at Tomlin High School was unbelievably awesome. For those who didn't, there's been some pictures up, I've just studied. That, that was a really neat concept.
Right.
Highly utilized classroom space. The teachers didn't have a classroom sitting empty with just them working in it one or two periods a day. They were always used in classrooms. And the think tank allowed for the collaboration and working together and everything they needed. Amazing feedback even from the teachers who were, happened to be around. That was a very impressive part of that concept. And of course, but again, we've done it to some degree here.
Right.
We've experienced that with, with success, so.
Right, exactly. And that takes us right to the next point, which is building efficiency. And we're finding that the combination of the staff think tanks and the shared classrooms blends up with less or better just light than just each, each teacher getting one entire classroom. So.
That's a, that's a good cost savings.
Right.
With the added bonus that it really helps promote collaboration and it helps really keep other depositing. So it's a cost savings with the benefit.
Right, exactly. So instead of the classroom being utilized five periods, I would say seven per day, it's been like seven hours. The media center, one of the things that we really liked as we journeyed through our meetings and the, and the tours was the library and the digital learning being the hub of the school, being the central hub of the school. We found that when we toured some of the schools that that, with that in place, that the media center became this very active hub. There were lots of studying that was going on around this space and it was very much a favorite destination space by the students.
It became a place of space and comebacks to the 21th facility. Those spaces like we saw at Westwood High School and even in conversation with the students at Tomlin High School and I said, where is your favorite space in the school? It was the media center slash library and it was because it was central between the classroom hallways and their soft seating and an opportunity to work in that place.
Absolutely. At Westwood High School, as well as Tomlin, both of those high schools and others, Success High School as well, had, had flow out spaces where there was soft seating that supported the library. So that you could have that experience very connected to the library, which further connected the library to the school. This first slide, that is one of the ones, as Dr. McKinnon mentioned, that we took a hard look at, the Tulsa Union. And so we looked at it here, we had discussions with the food services and they were very much important to study. Energy efficiency, redesign, those are, are given that we will study, we will select materials and systems with energy efficiency and durability and long life maintenance and then on. And then safety and security, that is another one that we will be taking a continuous look at as we, as we journey through this project. Also the safety guidelines, including natural surveillance. The think tanks is a good example of that. The teachers and staff in that would be in great position to visually see what's going on in a lot of the school. And access control, both of the main entry and, and the learning areas.
So can I say a little bit about dispersed dining? So traditionally, we have a 2,500 student, right, so we have a large, very large space or cafeteria space where all the students come together to eat. With dispersed dining, you see options for kids to go and eat in smaller places within the building. So at Tulsa Union, we saw a lot of satellite cost type service points for kids to eat and then they can get. Yes, yes. But seating in those spaces and so you start breaking down that larger space to students to gather in smaller groups. And, and in some places you can use that space for other things as well. So the idea is to start breaking down that large group so that you're not feeding 600 students at one time in a cafeteria. Dispersed and that was more interesting.
And that has some safety implications, obviously. Does that, is that more efficient cost wise or is that, is our cost, is that cheaper or more expensive or the same?
From the building perspective, what we're doing in this one is we're actually taking the square footage of the cafeteria and leaning into the classroom area. And so that is the collaboration space. So instead of increasing building size, which did increase cost, you're actually dispersing that. So you're using it harder. We, we like to say that we're making the space look harder. Is it getting used more frequently?
Oh, cafeteria is not just used for a bar mitzvah, but it's used for activities.
Exactly.
Oh, so another efficiency is perfect.
Why are there new ways?
But a positive.
Students are not in cafeteria, it's more often as well.
Yeah. It's like the theme here. Smaller space, used more efficiently, cost less, but also has some added bonuses to it. Good thing to follow. Keep going.
All right. Well, one of the next things we did was we took a look at the site. And we studied the site, solar orientation, wind, the trees, the topography of the land, roads, existing roads and future modifications. Adjacent to these neighbors and this particular site, High Point Elementary School, sharing a campus. So our design focus, we were looking to maintain green space, minimize the light rating, being respectful for the access to 2483. This one shows the building green, 2483. And then we know that bus and vehicular traffic for the shared campus is going to require some study, making sure that it works efficiently and serves both campuses well. And this site is 68er site. We did a layout, not as a final design, but as to test the site, to make sure that the spaces fit within the site. It's a very tight site, but they do fit. We typically, we see a lot of campuses in the 80 to 100 meter size for high schools, but we've seen them smaller too, but it's because that, so it's called the tightest site. This is Belton High School and VHS 9. And we were finding that that shared campus is about 85 acres. A little bit more in line with the typical. And this next study is, we're, we're the fundee ends. This, this sign focus, this is a building macro design, is just really a bubble diagram of showing spaces, adjacencies. And going back to our key strategies, some of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were paying attention to as we're journeying through was clear entry. Comfortable circulation flow, learning communities, the library is essential. Dispersed dining, integration of CTE, and future phase expansion. And we wanted to, as, as we journey through this, we'll be paying attention to expansion. Like the commons area that you see as a center, an example of that would be, it's shown adjacent to an outdoor space to where the commons may go into that space. Just want to make sure that there's, we're thinking toward growth at this point. And back to the options that Jared discussed earlier, there's the B, C and D. And there's also an A added here. And option A is after we went through the user group meetings with the 49 staff and the process of our meetings with the executive project committee and et cetera. We, our first program was 405,000 square feet for 2,500 students for, in classrooms. And that was a campus that, that square footage was based on taking what the group felt was the big decisions, the best decisions, appropriate decisions for, for Belton High School. And compared to other schools, I talked a little bit before about we compared other schools. For example, Tomlin High School serves 2,400 students and is 436,000 square feet. Round Rock High School 6 serves 2,600 and is pushing for 80. And Eastview in Georgetown serves 2,000 square feet. That main building is about 402,000 square feet, but with the 33,000 square feet of CTE, or 20,000 square foot build house, support buildings, total was about 480,000. So, but through, through the studies that were done on the 23 cents and the 27 and the 15 cents INS. We, we took a look at what the building looked like, what the program looked like for the 385,000 square feet, 25,000 square feet and 250,000 square feet. And that add up to option B is, that actually, I'm going to back, back up to option A. Option A is for 2,500 students, classroom support, 405,000 square feet. Option B, 2,500 students, core classrooms, 385,000 square feet. Option C, 2,500 students with classroom, core classrooms for 2,000, 325,000 square feet. And option D has part of the core for 2,500, such as the library, but then the cafeteria, 1,600. And the classrooms for 1,600 students and that one was at 250,000 square feet. I want to break those down just a little bit on the next few slides.
So each of these solutions were uniquely crafted for Belton, so we're not using any of the other tools or anything like that for, for. And it really is looking at each individual space, you'll see later, Belton has a high number of CTE spaces because there's a lot of enrichment to be able to support those students. So you'll see that that's been taught here within these programs. And then on each one of these options, we have about a 13-page document that describes every single space, the restroom, janitor's halls, it's all those kinds of things. Requires a lot of backup details, you're not just estimating these, these are actual square footage, actual room counts, so that's backed up. Option A through.
Exactly. And option A, I'm going to just kind of journey through here one by one. This one shows 14 classrooms in each learning community, 18 science rooms, 35 CTE rooms, auditoriums, 600. Dining to be accommodated through three lunch periods, gym seating for 1,500, auxiliary gym for 500. And then a 35% circulation support. And that 35%, you will see, you'll see that number, it'll say, it will change some throughout the different options. And what that means is that the circulation space, in some schools, you go in and it feels comfortable and you're going through a larger spaces than, that really serve each, each of the areas of the school. Then some schools you go into and there's like a maze of 12-foot corridors and you're going through tight shrines and et cetera, with classrooms on each side. Those square footage, that circulation, that number will come down on those. So here we're at 405,000 square feet. Option D, most of the upper portion is the same. We brought a couple of science classrooms to get to, where our goal was to see what would a 385,000 square foot school look like. The ultimate decisions may not be these exact decisions, but we were trying to work that 13-page sales spreadsheet to get to that 385,000 square feet. And we reduced the main entries, we finished some, the dining lecture, some of the study areas, and we took out a major space and disordered support for the major space area. Option C, this one is for, again, the 2,500 student core, but only 2,000, classrooms for 2,000 students. We're at 325,000 square feet here. You can see the classrooms and the learning communities are starting to drop. There's 11 for the learning community and 12 science rooms. But we understand that the school would need a phase two to bring that to the 2,500. But Jared mentioned a while ago that some of the classrooms would be, the options A and B show 850 square foot classrooms. This option sheet C shows 800 square foot classrooms. The CTE rooms, they were reduced further. This one shows an auditorium for 400 and dining bumping to four lunch periods. So we made the dining smaller, that you would have to utilize more lunch areas instead of three. And just.
How many lunch periods we have is the question. At Belton High School, we have four this year. We had three last year. But remember, we have the nine cafeteria.
And this one shows gym seating for 1,200 and the auxiliary company for 300, so they were brought there. This one shows the circulation at 32%, so we're starting to, to drop that little bit tighter space and circulation. It's also shows further reductions in square footage and the main entry dining, library was reduced. was reduced a bit, the staff, the staff thinkings were reduced in size on this one, as were the science rooms themselves, and the number of music practice rooms. And there was no bathroom, and the team room was reduced, and then the CTE shop size was reduced. So it made that goal of three hundred and twenty five thousand square feet.
So one of the themes as you go through here is that we tried not to wholesale cut off a particular program, the discussion amongst the administration group and the teachers, but we wanted to facilitate as much opportunity for the students, even if they're going to high school number two. And so the goal was, you'll see that we trimmed here, trimmed there, all the way down the line to be able to hit the square footage. So that's why you'll see, like, for example, the classroom from eight fifty to eight hundred, when you do forty four classrooms, that's a lot of square footage, and then you start adding up in total. And that was really the strategy to...
And option D. This one, twenty five hundred students, library sixteen hundred students, dining, and classroom for sixteen hundred. So again, there was a drop in line classrooms for learning community, ten science rooms, twenty CTE rooms. This one had, shows no auditorium, dining still, more lunch periods, gym seating twelve hundred, auxiliary, zero issue. And this one shows twenty eight percent circulation, meaning we're getting down to the corridors, the double loaded corridors, very tight efficient design. And it had further reductions of space in the same areas we've discussed for the dance room, and this one must have been reduced, the number of bathrooms is reduced, and the special population rooms were reduced as well. And this is just a slide that shows what we, all the numbers that we have been discussing on the last slides, just recapped here for comparison. You can see on the classrooms that it goes from option A at eight fifty, option B at eight fifty, option C at eight hundred, and option D at seven fifty. And the auditorium drops, goes from six hundred seats, six hundred seats, four hundred seats, to economical point. And then you can see a reduction in the seating for the auxiliary gym and the main gym as well.
Okay, so I got a question. This is actually more of a program question, another meeting being, I don't know if we want to state this, but this check's science rooms. Ten doesn't seem like near enough science rooms, eighteen seems like a lot of science rooms, but how do you decide how many science rooms you need if we're sharing? Because no teacher assigned your rooms, it's not empty two periods a day or whatever. How do you decide how many science rooms we need in a high school for twenty five hundred kids? And what's the formula to decide that?
Well, one addition to that is that option D has only sixteen hundred classes, the classroom space is sixteen hundred. So there's a little bit in the number of students needed in there, but the end of...
Okay, I got that. So, so twelve for sixteen thousand, I mean, what, is there a formula? Do we, how are we going for that?
Well, we asked similar questions in our programming meeting, and we left it to them to help us get those options, and it basically looked at what we must suppose to be looking at.
So is the, the class, is it operating the number of students, this is the formula?
And I was trying to remember.
If it's operated, seven and a half, seven.
And, and one, one resource that we use is that we use the Belton, the master schedule for the existing Belton High School.
Yes, and I'm trying to remember in our addition at Belton High School back to two thousand and six, I think we added sixteen science labs. But I, I think that Jared knows he's lost it in that back.
I think there were eighteen core science labs, and there were CTE science labs as well on top of that. So, so to answer your question, there was a two-fold approach for us, is really looking at the existing facility, how many science labs you currently have, others supporting the students, not only PHS, but PHS nine, and how those are working together. Look through the master schedule, how and with the maximum number of sections that are being taught, how can we facilitate efficiency? Then the other one is, when we talk about a core capacity or a classroom capacity, we're looking at, on average, how many students would be in that school facility? So when we talk, like, in option D, sixteen hundred students, we have enough seats that eighty five percent of your school would be filled at any time, and that would be sixteen hundred students. Because we know that not every seat is occupied every moment of the day, and there will be times where classrooms may be empty. And so that's why you build an efficiency element.
So, I guess on that part, the other question I had is, how do you, you reduce the number of, how do you say, the number of classrooms per neighborhood?
Neighborhood, that's a very clear.
Yeah. So, learning community. Why? So, why would you, well, how does that help? That seems, I mean, why would you need to reduce the number of classrooms in a small school?
So the, ultimately, the goal would be, is you're reducing, you're reducing the capacity of the school? And the idea would be, is that that would be something you'd add in the future? So maybe instead of having four classroom rooms, you only have three classroom rooms in...
I understand, but you'd still have one learning community. I mean, wouldn't that mean you'd add another learning community?
Correct. So it looks like you're adding classrooms to learning communities.
Fourteen as opposed to eleven.
We, we haven't gotten that far in terms of the design, so you could either say, well, we're gonna add additions to the, one of the learning communities, or you could add an entirely new learning.
I think that another way to look at it may be that in options A and B, we're looking at classrooms for twenty five hundred students, that fourteen times four is fifty six versus option C, which is assigned for two thousand students and forty four classrooms. And how we break those up, that's another conversation we could have. The, the, the number of classrooms in that learning community may actually be a...
Okay. I guess, just from my thinking about, at least how I conceptualize that learning community with the think tank, is how many of those are we gonna build? But there's an efficiency number of how many classrooms you want for a think tank, but that doesn't, I don't, just don't know why that changes depending on how big your school. Is it just how many of those units you have is what changes?
Right now, I'm, that's getting a little bit into the design side, we haven't quite gotten, we're gonna have to have those discussions, but yes.
But you lay it out that way, which looks to me like it costs more, it would cost more to have fewer number of classrooms, that means you have to have more think tanks.
Your first student.
Per classroom, right.
As opposed to that...
But that raises the cost.
Right, right.
You're building the same amount of square footage, whether you build three, four, that would be our, that's what we're saying here.
Okay.
We're not trying to define that, that particular strategy.
Okay.
Any other questions on this part of it?
So the option A is what we saw at Tom Glenn High School. That was telling me.
Yes.
When I said I wanted one of those in red, you put A in red, and that's what you're, that was, that's it?
That is exactly right.
You're right. Can't handle it. Oh, I burst my bubble.
More, more, we discuss on that at a later date. So the, part of what, when we were planning, we were using other numbers for the elementary school. And so we go through here, you'll see some other options, which may bring that to be a difference.
And we just turn over the elementary to you, so you can save us enough money on there to come up with some savings.
Right.
Is that acceptable?
Correct.
Interesting.
And, and so this is the, being the facility program, and what we will look is, you know, since we think of A, B, C, and D as a strategy to fit a dollar amount, and we can work through the minutia of, well, maybe you want three hundred and twenty five seats in the auditorium versus three hundred, we can walk through those details, if there's a have to have in there, it's not necessarily all of them.
And doing the math, they're somewhere between three hundred and ten, three hundred and twelve dollars per foot, carry these numbers?
So that, we're gonna hit that here next, about the cost. So that would be total project costs, yes, but not construction costs.
Gotcha.
So, which is a great segue into our next section, which is about anticipated building costs. So you hit the number one challenge that we have in terms of communicating a bond program, which is getting apples to apples about what everybody's talking about. So when, when we're talking about a hundred and fifty million dollar bond or even bond amount, that is total project cost, you need to have, you need to have all of the costs associated with these four buckets in there, so they're not all going to the construction building. You have costs associated with the land, whether it's your purchasing the land, going through due technical investigation, those kind of things. You have the building cost, and that would be what you're paying your contractor. So that's the, when, I'll talk here in a minute, that's the numbers that we're talking about, is the construction cost. But then you also have interior fit out front, getting, getting desks in the building, getting computers on the table, all those things that, you know, aren't regularly scheduled by a district to be able to buy sixteen hundred computers for the campus. And then even developmental costs from design fees, or graphics surveys, the things that are needed along the project from the design perspective. So then when you look just at the construction costs from that perspective, we use CSI as a way to start tracking costs in multiple divisions. And so this is really helping to define the first cost for the facility. And it's also, at the same time, as you're making choice about the first cost, it's affecting the lifecycle cost of the facility as well. So whether you choose a standing seam route versus maybe a TPO route, they both are great routes, they both keep your water out, but they have different life expectancy, standing seams over twenty five years, seam applied maybe twenty to twenty five years along the way. So each one of these segments are what we're looking at in terms of costs. From our firm and from an industry in the area, when we look at construction costs, what you would pay a contractor, we've been tracking facilities over the last several years. And so each one of these dots represent a facility along the way, along that timeline. So we, we've got the three graphs there from elementary school, middle school, and high school. So if you were constructing a high school today, you'd be looking at roughly about two hundred and sixty dollars per foot construction cost. And so when you look at several of the districts, like Leander, Tom Glenn, the Brown Rock, this is the realm that they're looking at paying for the construction cost. Leander's school, for example, that was built two years ago, the construction cost was ninety two million dollars. That didn't include fields, it didn't include technology, so you have, need to make sure that it's all inclusive along the way if you're comparing among the districts. But these really represent the construction costs that we're tracking and we're proposing, and we're gonna provide some options here through the floor, which will be reducing those costs that would in turn affect the program. So when we presented B, C, and D, you know, we presented these last month, they were at a very high level from a total project standpoint. We wanted to make sure that you understood, as you look at the next slide, there's actually a lot of information behind that, about what that represents all the way down the board. So taking option A, you have four hundred and five thousand square feet. We priced this at two hundred and twenty five square feet to be a modest facility, and that's where you get the ninety one million dollars hard cost. But then you look through the other categories, and that is what is showing us as an industry average, we talked about fitting out a building, that, that need, those kind of things. We have some project contingency in there, just for flexibility, if the market might fluctuate, or as we decline, what kind of chairs do you want, it may come in at three point three million, you know, those kind of things. And ultimately, get down to what a high school would cost starting construction in twenty nineteen, we have the four numbers down there at the bottom of the chart, from a hundred and twenty seven million to seventy eight million dollars. So a lot of information there on the backup. So the question is, what is the difference then, when you look at a facility, or how do you get to modify that? So one option, which you see there really listed, is the program square footage across the top, by reducing that, then in turn you reduce the cost. And then the other one is, is the cost per square foot. And that's about looking at those materials and systems from that you put in A1, how that balances the lifecycle cost. So what I've generated here is an example list of the different systems and materials that you can choose along the way, going through there. These are generally aligned, so you, you just need to select most of them, if those were important, it was important for you to get the two hundred and twenty five dollars per foot, you need to make most of those selections along the way. So that does include, on the site here, the two sixty square foot request list, put in a artificial turf competition, artificial turf practice, two natural turf beds. Here, in a high school, for a large high school, HVAC system, HVAC system would most likely be a chilled water system, which is the most efficient to operate, has lifecycle cost, but also has on that square cost. You might get into other things, like finishes, from what goes on the floor, or what goes on the wall, to make sure that you're protecting those systems, so they're easy to clean, and nice and waxy, when you're doing it. So some example facilities, as you'll see, we have pictures of some of those on the right, from Tom Glenn, Success High School or two that we toured, but here in Belton, this would be very similar to New Tech High School and North Belton Middle School, with the amount of transparency, the finishes, those kind of things, and nothing that those cost two hundred and sixty square foot, but they, no, the look and feel of those a lot kind of resembles those facilities. And I didn't mention on the previous draft, but part of the difference between, for example, Belton, New Tech, and the high school, you have a lot more specialized facilities than high schools, we talked about CTE facilities, science facilities, gymnasiums, auditoriums, those have a much higher cost per square foot, per room, all those elements that you don't have necessarily in other schools. So that would be the two hundred and sixty dollars per foot bucket. And then as we take a step to two twenty five, this would be where we start looking at some alternatives. So here, you may only get one artificial turf field, three natural turf fields. We'll start looking at alternative roofing systems. Here, we have the built up roof, standing seam roof, but it's a internal roof, trains and overflow drains, we move two conductor heads and downstops. You know, it's still, again, a roof that's solid, it's water operated roof, we don't design completely. And then you start looking at alternatives like HVAC, we go through the large package DX, rather than a chilled water system. Example facilities here would be Westwood High School or Belton High School, kind of all within this category in terms of quality, the systems, and the look and feel. And then the final one, yeah, at two oh five square foot, this would be a very modest facility. This would be kind of minimizing the first cost to its maximum. Here, you know, it might be all, all natural fields, we look at going with a green engineered frame, very simple forms. Here, you might go into a package DX system or a split system, HVAC side, most economical first cost. Some example facilities, but we'll be on the curve line. Do you mind if you put on a curve line? They, they are as long, they have, we would never do something that would be detrimental to the district, but yes, a split system usually has a lack of expectancy, fifteen years, where chilled water may last thirty plus years on air handling, so definitely a difference in terms of longevity.
Okay, okay.
And so here, we'll see, oh, the example, so let me pass this, Eastview High School, kind of falls in this, Salado High School as well, kind of goes with very simple forms, line of that, line of, you know, very super openings, you know, it's very strategic. And so as we talk about construction, delivery method, as we move from the two sixty to the two oh five, I would sway to moving towards getting the, whether it's a construction manager, rest on board, and getting a cost estimator, is that that number is tough to hit in this market. And so there's a lot more work up front, making sure that we're right, making the right decisions, appearing at right things in the marketplace. Because the cost of brick isn't even changing here over time, so the, you pay the brick ticket, may affect that cost, but we may want to look at split ACU on it, and those kind of things. We really need to hit now and ahead, if that's something the district is interested in. So, then to your point, Mr. Pinder, about where, where we can hit within these examples, so this would be, on the left side, you'll see A, B, C, D, so those would be the various programs. And then across the top, we have the three buckets of cost, two sixty, two oh five to two oh five. And then the four options we've been thinking, you can see they're highlighted in the columns. So really, the board has the option to pick what program we'd like to hit, and what cost we would like to hit, along the way, really help be able to make decision, make the right decision in terms of the first cost balance with lifecycle costs. So, any questions on facility costs? If any, would you? Okay.
We're rolling.
Well, and that leads us then to the next section, which is construction delivery. And so I kind of started hitting on this. Jim, you're just gonna jump in with us, as we're on CA delivery experience, I'll let him run you through what we're seeing in the industry.
Thank you. Sounds like you guys have some decisions today.
Sounds like you guys have some decisions today. So once you make those decisions and Jared is prepared to get that down on paper, what we're also going to wind up with is a set of construction items, plan, specs. Those are going to form the basis of the contract, that is what the contractor replies, and that's what we will ultimately build on. But as you get into construction, there's actually, you know, the breaking order and controlling the costs is very important. But as you pointed out earlier, as trustees of the public money, there's more to construction than just bricks and mortar and cost. There's the experience of the construction process, and I think I went too far, there we go. So these are actually the various methods. So we have various methods, you know, to deliver the contract, listed here, we've got the competitive bid all the way down to the construction manager at risk. And these methods actually provide varying levels of experience, they're of transparency, they have the process, the quality of the services that you're actually getting from the contractor, and, you know, just the trust and confidence that you have in the information that you're getting from, information that you are contributing to your company and your contractor. Various methods are competitive bid, which is traditionally a less some, stipulated some, part bid is another term there. That's where the contractor takes the documents and provides the price. Typically, this is, the selection there is based on the lowest cost. Competitive seal proposal follows the same process of the architect, so he provides a set of documents, and he goes by, we complete the documents before he provides his price. But along with his price, he also submits a set of qualifications that talks about his experience with KBR projects, talks about his experience with work here in Central Texas and the project type that we're doing, he talks about his changeover history. He talks about specifically about the personnel that he's going to put on the job and qualifications of the project managers and superintendents, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that later on. So the competitive seal proposal, in contrast to competitive bid, gives you that alternative to actually select on qualifications as well as price. The construction manager at risk process, it's one that, it's where the construction manager actually comes on board earlier in the process during the design phase and acts as a consultant to you during that time, providing that scheduling information, sequencing the information, and helps us in our design. We talk about constructability, how the building actually goes together. It informs us on how best to put the projects together and make this part of the building go first, or that last, or what have you. They also provide real time estimates for us along the way, so that we know precisely what the building is costing at each milestone, each design milestone. And if you so choose, you can actually ask the construction manager at risk to provide his guarantee of a maximum price before the documents are actually completed. Most of the quality CMs that we work with are able to come in at 50% BD, 100% BD, provide a very accurate pricing while we're in the process of wrapping up the documents. This particular method, it helps us control change orders later on because the construction manager knows the intent of our documents, he's working with us side by side and understand what it is that we're trying to achieve with our decision to make along the way. Another method that we've got up there, the construction manager agent, it's another acceptable method for a KBR. We've seen it a few times, it's not real common in our area, but it has been done. In this particular case, you can see on the contractual line of responsibility there, that the CM agent acts just like a consultant, just like the architect. And as we get the documents put together and go on the street, we can, you know, the service you select with those guys, they may help you with the bidding process, well, they'll be with us maybe in the sequencing and scheduling. But in the other process, subcontractors are contracted directly to you as the owner. This particular process gives you the most control over construction, but also requires the highest maintenance value because you are in fact a contractor to all of the subcontractors who are doing the work. The final one we've had up there is design build. This is one where you see, you see those frequently in the higher ed market, where the design builder is the single source of responsibility for the project throughout, the builder contracts with the architect. We actually worked for him during two year vision along the way, and then at the end of the day, the subcontractor can contract with him. So it's a really good process, we may be a little bit far down the road here to actually manage that particular one. So that competitive seal proposal, just some of the things that we've talked about here, you know, you hire us, we design the project, we did it to multiple CMs, they came back with their qualifications, and you select from that along with the price. Those qualifications can be weighted so that you can put more emphasis on price, you can put more emphasis on KBR, you can put more emphasis on the quality of this personnel that you have in the field. So you can kind of, if you choose those attributes, then you want to wait this proposal on and select in that particular way. In that case, he holds all the subcontractors and helps them to do the project. The CMNR, this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier, where he comes on early in the project, assists us in the design, with constructability issues. At the end of the day, when the documents are complete, when you're ready for your guaranteed maximum price, he visits multiple subcontractors. So he is actually collecting at least three prices, if not more, from each tray, to see the length of the bricks, concrete, what have you. And then for those, he is able to select the best quality that he's going to get from those based on their experience working with them, working in this particular market and what have you. Reconstruction services, range of cost estimating, scheduling, all of those things that we would expect from a CM, all these out there providing services. The pros to each, competitive seal proposal, this is a pro and con to our presentation. On the competitive seal proposal. So with competitive seal proposal, the pricing is, again, similar to the hard bid, the price, you know, the cost is transparent, you know it's X dollars, that's not going to change except for, you know, whatever comes up in the field. Again, we use a pretty determined way to select that. One of the cons to the competitive seal proposal is that there's no contractor input during the design, the contractor doesn't come in here until after the documents are complete. So he has, he doesn't have that advantage of the early knowledge, the early intent of what the contractor should have with the design and the documents. Because it is somewhat of a fixed price, well, not somewhat, because it is a fixed price, this can also lead to some adversarial issues that may come up with his interpretation of the documents versus our intent of the documents. We don't have that, or that is minimalized if we didn't have CMR. And then there's, you know, with that, because he doesn't have that early knowledge of our intent, there's also a tendency for a chain of orders on that particular method. CMNR, you know, protocols are, you can do a factory schedule, multiple good packages, there's design reviews, and you put along the budget, constructability, help with some of the cost issues that Jared talked about just a moment ago, by the way, you just know what materials, not the dust for a particular application. CMR is financially responsible for cost and schedule, so it gives you a guaranteed maximum price since his leave, that's going to provide the intent of the documents with that. And as a result, because of his early involvement, we do see a tendency for a chain of orders and added costs later on. Some cons on this one, CM at risk, it really requires somebody that's used to providing those pre-construction services. It's easy to say, yeah, I can provide you, I can provide you a schedule, but actually provide meaningful information about early in the process and communicating that in a form that we can use, and that you can understand is key and is critical and can be a problem if the contractor has to work with that environment. And, you know, there is the possible perception of less transparency. I think that the word perception there is key. I personally find that CMR is probably more transparent than the others, because we know that money is being spent, and we can fire those in our contract documents along the way that he provides subcontractor proposals as part of his backup data. He can show us how he really created the particular line. It's a little different in the competitive seal proposal than also in the hard bid, where he just gave you a number and you never lose a number in regard. Some people say that perception issue is a problem, I think that's just what it is, perception issue, not a regard. So, you know, those are the processes, those are the construction delivery methods, I would just have to add a little bit of editorial comment here to conclude. No matter which one of these methods that you use, the greatest impact to a construction schedule is the quality of the people that are in the field, is the project manager, is the estimator, is the superintendent. And any one of those players, all three of them together, can impact the project positively or negatively. And it's being able to ensure that you've got the best personnel in the field during the project, I think, one of the most important factors. About any questions?
So what are you seeing in the district's percentage cost?
You know, we track that, and I'm probably right now seeing that we're about, it's probably about 50. It might be quite short, you know, I had in my notebook right here, about half of our CMR, about half of our CAC.
I know there's no way to know, to compare the costs as you're comparing half the stories, and you can't take one project, one design, and say do both ways, let's see what comes out better. But do you have a gut feeling sense, or are they a wash? Is it a style issue?
It really is a style issue, I think is the advice to there. What we can, what we can track are change orders. And track how close the initial cost is coming towards our budget. And so through those, both of those methods, we're seeing that our budgetary costs are pretty close on that, but it's those change orders where we start seeing the difference. That's really where.
And so you see a lot more change orders with the competitive seal, as not with the...
And a lot of that has to do with how a guaranteed maximum price is structured. So if you don't have, if there's parts of the document that may find and provide that price, they'll use an allowance. And so you'll have an allowance line out, let's just make something up for playground for the testing. You'll have a line out of the playground. As you choose what playground you will want, it may be more or less.
So as you know, we've had history of using the CMAR and have learned the need for high scrutiny, and paying close attention to auditing that. When you do that, you save money, and we've been through that process, as you know. What do you, what do you all do to monitor those if, for districts that choose the CMR? What things do you have in place to monitor your roles?
That's a great question. You know, one of the roles, and we've said this repeatedly on our, Jared has mentioned it a number of times, is that our construction administration department, we come on regardless of what process we're in, we're going to have those guys that are actually out in the field, contractors on board, give house approvals, they understand what the intent of documents are, what we're trying to achieve. And those guys are trained construction professionals that we have on staff, will be assigned to the project as the monthly payment applications come through, they'll scrutinize every single one, hide in detail, they're still in place immediately. As changes do come up, and inevitably the world, I just need to be prepared, there are many changes along the way. We take, we price those ourselves, we can use names, publish construction cost data, since we have our own historical database of costs, often times we can go to vendor friends that we have to talk about, they're doing this price, and you're seeing this, and this is what's going to happen. We sort of discriminate. Yeah, very close. We've got a lot of the review, what we are in the process of reviewing, we've reviewed and recommended, you as the owner accept the responsibility for the cost. We've reviewed, so now we're subcontractors. This is clearly showing the documents you have, you can't really use that. And I would have to say somebody, I'm not upset, there's a lot of new work that's all responsible. So, yeah, we're on topic, this is your...
So what controls do you have in place to limit change orders on a competitive seal duty process?
Well, it's very similar, what, again, utilizing our knowledge of the personnel, we can see the trends that are happening out in the field. And the contractor, we can tell by his paperwork, if he's looking at it, well, he's not. We can tell that, hey, he's over here, he's focused on contract, he's not really thinking about that steel that's going to come along the line. And so we begin to challenge and push them, what's going to happen next? So if he is looking at the, he's not down there, the data, steel, the rise, the job site, oh, well, hey, you've got to put in that column there, and you haven't seen the change order, and you're pushing along the line.
So a real life example, I think is at Jim's point, our process doesn't certainly change is when we were going through the AdLEC project, the Stating project, there he submitted a product for the soil stabilization, and it was a ton bib, but for our initial interpretation, it's not in line. Really dug into the details, we heard as color put strong that, no, you need to provide the right goal specified. And after time, they found, they said, yes, we can do what we're going, and they gave us the product that we want. That doesn't change whether it's either method is that we're still holding whatever, whether CSP or CMR at the same local quality, same local need, the same expectations also.
Because I'm, I'll jump in here at this point, I'm just still trying to figure out, from your standpoint, it's really just a six of one, half is of the other?
From, yeah, from my standpoint, there may be the...
You are doing 50% both ways, and you're having success, that's good value to us.
Right. Our deal is having qualified to, because if we get a team that knows plans of business, we're just going to try to build a $100 million high school, we're going to be fine, sure, all of us. And so having the right team, the right people, that's the key.
Sure, that makes sense. I mean, any...
And I would say in particular, in CM at risk, two of the big reasons is that you go, is that you're really concerned about time in terms of making a schedule happen. So like, for example, Westwood's currently doing renovations, 96,000 per feet over four semesters, very challenging project, renovation, great opportunity to get CM at risk participation, right? You've got a very short schedule. The other one is where you're trying to control cost, whether you're looking at inflation, or like the example, if you wanted to go to the 205s per foot, you're really trying to challenge cost there. Even in the 225, you're potentially challenging that. So if you lean toward that, that would be a...
So if you lean toward that, that would be a reason to get that early input, because they're guaranteeing a price and that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, they're going to hedge their bets too. They're, they're, they're going to, they're going to build and adding contingencies. All sides are going to be, that's the really the matter.
Yes, but I think you, you hit on it right there, the difference that both of them will build in that, build in that contingency. But the CMAR, it's actually his responsibility to identify what's contingency factor around.
Oh, they show you what they are instead of just, we can challenge them on. And we can say, yeah, we're not willing to do that, or we can reject, you know?
That's correct.
On a competitive seal, you don't know where, how that price is going to be. That's, that's the thing, you know, I mean, it'd be nice to say do it both ways and see what we got. But again, I mean, obviously it's not doable, so you have to decide.
One of the pros, and it's a real negative word to look at, one of the pros to the CSP is that if you make them stay, you win. And if he comes in and gives you a competitive price and you accept his price and his qualifications, and a lot of that you put in the market. Well, our awards are shown in the documents, and you're required to provide them. Just because you say we would include them, doesn't mean we need to believe it.
That's true with, with CMAR.
No, no, CMAR, let's say he comes in and he call, he qualifies, he's, he's providing the proposal, not a bid. And so in his proposal, he qualifies, hey, I did provide the market. And so we're down here seeing where's the market doors, and I put myself in surprise, and I'm sure they're not there. And so that, that.
So that gets outside of the, so.
But we'll, I mean, those are streaming.
Where the example? Okay. You guys got a wonderful, good jumping there in this conversation, you construction guys?
Either way is.
Yeah, there's risks with either way, right?
Yes.
One way's safe?
Yes.
And there's advantages?
The advantage is, the advantage for CMAR is you, you pick a Lithuanian light bulb that costs six hundred dollars a fixture and the CMAR walks in and goes, I can get that same light in a different brand for a hundred dollars a fixture. Why would we use that? But there's advantages and disadvantages as well. You have to have somebody that's willing to do that as well, that's, that's hard to find.
And I think it's where you find the right partner. Like you're saying, you know, we pull contractors, both your local and Temple Belt and that area as well, that's Austin. Get an X Factor response, often going to lean towards CMAR, you know, because they've got a lot of people that are a lot of work on the books. And then the local ones said, no, we prefer CSP, so.
Is that what I'm understanding? I know in the last twenty years, the CSP that I've dealt with, as you're, say you're fifty fifty, twenty years ago, I didn't see much CMAR. Most of mine is in Austin, most of what I see now is, is construction manager, or that side. In fact, most of them shy away from the other side of it. But you're saying out in smaller areas, it's still more of competitive seal versus Austin?
You know, that's, that's, that's a good point, sure. I mean, we, we've had clients that, you know, operated and stipulated some world for years and then they migrated to the CMAR. And we've kind of seen a trend where some of them will come back to the CSP. So it's, yeah, it's, it's hard to say that, you know, that guy, you know, is just here in this region, it's CSP or CMAR.
Jason, did you have, you started to say something? Didn't come.
Really, I mean, the CMAR, I mean, we have staff in place now that was like, I don't think we would go through the issues that we had before, so. There's a lot more.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask you guys a question? On your, on your experience before, did you go through the weighted qualification process as you were doing your selection?
Yeah.
Still didn't turn out the way you like?
Yeah, the weighted, weighted qualification process can be, can be a real process or to make the lead process to be on your person, so.
But it, it doesn't matter how well you select, you still have to, you can trust to verify is the issue. It's not how, you know, you choose well, but you still have to verify even if you trust, right?
That's correct.
I mean, that's what you just described.
Right.
And that's what I was asking for, how, how do you verify? How do you monitor those you trust? You still want to monitor for details. And, and I think Jason's point is well taken, we, we learned from that, we know, we know how to monitor that partially. We've got, we've heard some help with that and, and we've got you, so why you're with us, frankly, I agree.
So it is worth decision, you, we won't be deciding.
We're not deciding tonight, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we do, we are.
Well, I think one thing, I want to see, you mentioned you work with a lot of CMAR guys that you're comfortable with. I would hope we provide that to Dr. McKenna, so we can see those people that are kind of, that you're comfortable working with. I feel like something along that.
Yep.
I mean, because between that, that individual person and your field supervisors, I think that's, that's where all the oversight and change orders and costs is all settled.
So will we just not make this decision?
January? The, the key would be is for CMAR, this is the one that involves early in the process is where you want. So, you know, by the first quarter, if they need a schedule, we would, we would have to really recommend having somebody that provides the best value at that point.
And speaking of the schedule.
Yes. We proceed these up quite, quite nicely.
So in January, December, right? So in January, we will need to decide which route we're going to go.
Delivery method, right.
If you're choosing the CMAR.
Right, which needs to be decided.
Yeah, we're deciding which delivery method. And then, in that meantime, you will provide a list and to Dr. McKenna. So that would mean, in order to get them onboard, we would have to schedule a vote for those that worries to pick. Well, we'd have to have them in.
We'd have to interview them and have go through our.
And then get them into, into the poll rather quickly if we decided to go that route.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, you would be a part of the interview process as well.
Welcome the opportunity.
Okay.
As will our staff.
Okay, on the schedule. Uh, so this is the, is the opportunity, so we've talked about facility program companies in school, we've talked about costs in terms of what are those first costs we want to look at? The last item is, we really wanted to look at the timeline. So there's a couple, two aspects that we wanted to really focus on here. Uh, so we wanted to start with the timeline that was presented in the roadmap twenty twenty-five and really identify each one of the milestones along the way. As we included, and these are really here for reference at this point, so you can kind of understand how this pans out. The three proposal, the three amateurization schedules, the bond payment schedules that we presented were based on a November bond with two sales along the way for both the twenty-three cent, the twenty cent, and the fifteen cent tax increase. And these are really representing the most recent.
And this is Jennifer's stuff?
This is Jennifer's stuff, exactly, exactly. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure that you understood what those implications were. Uh, and then we wanted to really kind of chart that out in a Gantt chart. Uh, that really kind of shows what's happening over the next several years. Because that really changes here in the next few options that we look at. So in the Beltin twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, which is what you see here on the screen, uh, you would have a call for bond in August of seventeen, you'd vote, vote for bond in November. Uh, but right now, you'd see that elementary school design would need to start in the summer of seventeen. That would continue through the early part of twenty eighteen. You'd go to bid and you'd have about fifteen months of construction to have an opening in twenty nineteen. So that's the, the blue bar. If you move down one more bar, uh, that would be the high school number two. So as we looked complete schematic design here in April, we needed to pick the project back up no later than summer of twenty eighteen. And you'd go finish the design process, you'd go through the bidding process, which is about two months. Uh, if you go through, whether you go CMAR or CSP, you both have a bid window in there competitive. And then we'd be looking at about a twenty-four month construction schedule. And that may change, you know, as you go smaller on the high school, it takes less time, as you go bigger on the high school, it takes a little bit more time that we've been planning that carefully. The idea that that would open up roughly about the beginning of the second quarter in twenty twenty-one. Since you're talking about how bidding is four hundred thousand square foot school, that's a lot of furniture, a lot of computers, phones, everything else that needs to make it in there that we want to make sure there's samples, not develop that, so you're not painting the door brains here for students and that type. Uh, but then in twenty twenty-one, you see there in August, then DHS nine would move to a middle school from a high school. With the opening of the high school. So in twenty nineteen, you'd have a new elementary school, and in twenty twenty-one, you'd have a new high school, an opening DHS nine as a middle, middle school. Uh, so in this one, in, on the bottom there, you'll see that there are two bond sales, one in twenty, early twenty eighteen and one in mid to late twenty nineteen, uh, that in this case would represent one of those three bond scenarios before from the hundred and fifty million to the ninety-nine million scenarios. So then we ask the question, what would happen if you built sooner? Uh, and really the idea is let's move that up a year, because you would open it up in August with that deal. Uh, the goal would be to minimize the inflation. So in this scenario, uh, what you see is option two, uh, we're maintaining the bond, uh, call and sell from August to November of seventeen. Uh, the elementary school design remains the same with an opening in twenty nineteen. And then instead of starting in twenty eighteen with the design, the, the design of the high school would start in twenty seventeen. Could facilitate a year opening earlier. Uh, as we went through these discussions with the district, uh, there's consideration, we'll get into some of those about opening up DHS nine as a second high school. So you literally start with functioning two campuses there, uh, adjacent to each other. So you could open in the off year, then in twenty twenty, you would open the high school, uh, adjacent to the High Point Elementary School, uh, there. Uh, so that's the, the gray, the third line, sorry, fourth line there, the library bar. Uh, and then in twenty twenty, you'd have the elementary school on the ground, you'd open up the high school and the middle school. Uh, so then you'll see, I've maintained the same bond cells, uh, there in early twenty eighteen and then one in twenty nineteen. Uh, and then really identified kind of the pros and cons as we go through there. Uh, so one, just as a note of starting the elementary school and high school design a little bit earlier. Uh, but then on the second one, uh, there's, the pros and cons of opening the second high school is is you're on the same campus, you allow for a few shared resources. Uh, Mr. Plovav was very happy to take over all of that and coordinate it all.
He was tied for his biggest lawsuit. He didn't realize it was a second.
Uh, and then the UIL considerations where they were broken schedule. But in this scenario, you actually address the middle school capacity sooner.
Which is our most urgent.
Correct. Yeah, so you start actually hitting middle school capacity in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh, and this would allow you to do it an entire year earlier. The challenge with option two, one of the challenges with option two is you'll notice that that first bond settles in February of eighteen. By that point, you've made it the majority of the way through the design phase on both projects. So you're looking at all the, the testing, the fees, everything associated with that process. So right now, the, we started looking at a, a fun chart, a, I was about to miss somewhere there, but anyhow, a draw schedule uh, for the services, so between the start of the project in February, you'd encounter about eight and a half million dollars of funds needed to pay for those services to that point for everything there.
Bill didn't fall out of his chair when he said that, so that's.
He fell out earlier and he's recovered already.
He's, he had a preview and then it didn't shock him.
Uh, so, so it's actually unattainable at, at that point. That, that, that is a real challenge that is, is a little sitting at one. Uh, so then we would need to be, in this case, very careful on bond sale number two, just because you're hitting about the hundred million dollar mark in that twenty eighteen timeframe about August. So we just need to make sure that we sell the bonds at the right time at that point. Uh, but really the, the point of this option is moving the high school year, a year earlier. We're saying would reduce inflation, right now we're planning five percent a year over the, the next three years. So from the smallest and largest facility, that'd be somewhere between seven million and three and a half million dollars. Or you'd be able to build an additional twenty thousand square feet to twelve thousand square feet. So when you think about that, that's about twelve classrooms to twenty classrooms more that you'd be able to build by moving the school, opening earlier a year. So it's option number two. So then as we go to option number three, very similar in terms of the bond schedule uh, and how everything kind of below the first line works. Uh, the two key changes then would be is you'd call for the bond in February and actually vote on the bond in May of seventeen. So this is advancing the high school earlier year and advancing the call and election for the bond six months earlier. The other thing that's a little different on this one is then the bond sale we're showing in August of twenty seventeen. In this scenario, there is some flexibility with that money hand over there, it is really working through those details. Uh, but basically has the exact, this scenario has the exact same benefits between the various options uh, in terms of DHS nine would open earlier, you'd be able to address middle school capacity. Uh, we see the reduced inflation costs here in terms of design fees. If we looked at about a August timeframe, somewhere around three million dollars of design services at that point. Uh, and then the other two items would be, we talked about the call for bond election, but uh, selling bonds earlier would be allowing you to get into state funding earlier, because you're hitting the legislative cycle. Now, I know that if, right now, there was an estimated about two hundred thousand dollar cost. And then the bill's been kind of working those numbers in the background as well to really determine what that potential benefit would see, would be. Uh, because you are close to maxing out EDA funding right now, uh, but there is a benefit there. Uh, and then as well as, uh, as you called the bonds earlier, you're paying on principal and interest earlier, so then you gain capacity earlier because you're shifting everything forward a year to two years on those funds. So that's the other option. So when we talked, when we roll back to the very beginning of the presentation, we talked about strategies. We talked about reducing the facility costs, or reducing the facility size, which was about facility programming. We talked about reducing facility costs, which was really about construction costs in the first cost. Uh, now we've talked about schedule, about building earlier, and schedule in terms of calling the bond earlier as well. Any questions on this one? Everybody still in their seats?
I like the saving, you know?
So, uh, we do have a amateurization table, this would represent a hundred and fifty million dollar. We didn't have Jennifer run all three scenarios, but fundamentally that you would have in May election, you can go through the, the detail there. Uh, but basically everything tracks a year to two earlier on the INS basis on that.
Are you, I know we just approved contract, are you still tracking a twenty-three million dollars for the elementary? Or are you going to bring that one in significantly?
Uh, right now, potentially lower, uh, and we can, we'll talk about that next time. We've had a couple of meetings, uh, to really talk about the location of the school, method of the model. So we're getting rolling on that one. We went and toured, uh, the, uh, elementary school prototype, uh, so walk through that. Uh, so now we're starting to gel on that, so we're going to be coming back in January.
We're going to be back there in the eighth of January.
Exactly, one forty-nine minute. So we'll, we'll talk through all those scenarios. But yes, that's the C R. So, next steps, yes, it is the C R. Uh, so next steps as we look toward the January board meeting for the high school. So there's, there's five approvals that we'll be looking for, uh, for what you had heard today. Uh, and the fifth one is really saying that we're ready to move forward for the design. So the first.
That's what we've been working for.
Yeah, so we have those four items regarding facility program, budget, contract method, and schedule. So and then kind of the, the questions there below of, of kind of what you'd be thinking about as you look, as we ask for approval to move forward.
Jared, thank you for walking us through this, as well as we've been a lengthy process, but a lot of information tonight. We don't have to act on anything tonight, that's, that's one good thing, we have a lot to digest, even if we had this ahead of time, but I appreciate you walking through that. I don't know, do you guys have any specific questions to the, to the plans, any of these elements you want to follow up with? Got any thing else you want to share about this? Anxiety, but it's coming. So, but thank you for walking us through it gently.
Absolutely.
Told you we, we needed that, so thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you all. Great information tonight.
So if you have any questions, we, we will be back in January, but.
You'll, I suspect you'll be with us every meeting we have. You're, I suspect you'll be with us every meeting we have.
Brush my line.
You have been and you will continue to be wonderful. So you appreciate that.
How many other P Ns you have?
How many other P Ns?
Every board meeting you go to?
Just one.
Just us?
Just one?
You're a roadmap twenty to twenty-five, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
We appreciate your loyalty. You're loyal. Okay. Very much, thank you all for being here. Okay, uh, the next item, we're about done here. The next item is to review progress. I have forgotten the language I'm supposed to say on this. I need to make sure I use the, the right language. You will see, uh, the, uh, uh, information here. Very, for last page, this is the continuing education grant report. We are required to report in, uh, final regular meeting of each year, even though it doesn't fulfill our full year, but goes March one to December, uh, the training received. Uh, as you can see on there, all of our board members have exceeded the minimum requirements, uh, and again, Sue Jordan is our, uh, uh, rock star, that's a good word for it, uh, received the most training, uh, this past year, uh, but, but the most important. I think the note is that everybody has exceeded the minimum requirements for our, uh, required training. That is, will be posted on our website, it will be included in our minutes, and, uh, recorded for posterity for anybody here. Yes.
On the Public Information Act, I mean, obviously, it says I haven't had it, but I'm pretty sure I've had it. But on, if you look at Leo's and Jeff's and Sue's, states that they weren't on the board.
Yep, they got their official, this is not school-specific training, it's state of Texas-specific training, and they had all served on city boards and gotten those from their city. It comes out of the state, uh, also, they were able to not have to.
I don't think it's public information and training.
At the time, you and Jason came on, um, we had our public information, that can be delegated to our staff member, Kyle is our co-director and office officer.
Can you put your name in for me?
Years ago, we all took it, but then the, the later years, it was, hey, you don't have to do this, you can delegate this, so you all chose to not. You're welcome to go to it, or take it if you'd like, so you could add that. But since you've been on the board, you've added N A, because it's not applicable.
Oh, nice.
That's what, that's what.
I was making sure of them.
You are, have exceeded the minimum expectations, you, that is not a required, it's optional, but you're welcome to.
Kyle's better at that than me.
And, and, and I've been to the training and I want to delegate, so. Uh, okay, uh, issues or concerns for future agenda or administrative reports? Jeff, you got anything? Amanda?
Are we meeting prior to the next meeting?
Yes, uh, and, and a good, good question, I was gonna do that in a minute. We, uh, we need to have a meeting before, and the only, only time you're going, all we can finally understand, right? Right? And so I think the consensus was on January ninth, everybody else could meet, but we won't be able to have Amanda with us, and I don't know what to do. We, we couldn't figure out a way to do that. We'll catch you up, that's a workshop only, no action taken, uh, kind of a meeting, and then our regular meeting uh, will be on, um, on the twenty-third, two weeks later. We can't meet on sixteen, it's your birthday.
We don't have school yet, there's.
Yeah, it's holiday. Uh, it's holiday because it's your birthday, and Mark is a district. Okay, anything, anything else? Mike? Sue?
Are you sure that we can cover the things that we need, those are the items we're gonna be approving in one workshop?
No. So we're gonna do as much as we can at that one workshop, and then we're gonna follow it up and then make a decision from there on what we do prior to our next regular meeting and see what we'll have to do, but.
I would, I would add that if we choose to go with the May election, we'll call the election by February seventh, September. So we are on.
We're, we're getting first list of decision points here, we've been talking about that, but yeah. A May election would call the bond, you'd have to call the bond election in February.
We would have to have a meeting, the point, the February meeting is actually scheduled late, so we'd have to have an earlier.
Special call meeting.
Special meeting.
But, but more important than that, we'd have to decide if we want to do that, so that's gonna have to happen in January. We're kind of running out of December here, and because holidays coming up again, so first, first, basically, the first meeting, we can come back at least in January. And we'll meet as long as we need to, and then we'll, we decide if, if that will be.
Well, I'm a communist, I'm a hard, no matter which one it's like, it's very hard to pass that. You have so many, um, deep already, just from the past, that's, that shows that November, that's something you're thinking where you may miss.
We, we suspect we'll have large voter turnout, regardless of, well, I would suspect we'll have large voter turnout, because this is a compelling community interest, and so. Well, that's one of the questions we have to ask. I like the, say, left, uh, but the old question they just gave us about how much money you can save by voting, that's a different. Uh, you know, I was gonna add this too, and that, that is reminded. Right, right. Okay, so here's the other, here was the, my thinking back when we went through the long-range planning process, I kept saying and thinking, November makes sense, because we're gonna be in the legislative session in May, and they don't take any action in the legislative session until May and June, um, really, at the end of May, so it would be a flux. Now, that also assumed we were gonna win the Supreme Court ruling that the legislature would have to act for equitable funding. Since the Supreme Court ruled that it is prerogative of the legislature to maintain an inequitable system in comparison to our tax payer, um, they will continue to do so, I think that's a given. So that took, to me, it took away the advantage or reason to wait till November, waiting on the legislature to do the right thing. Legislature's not gonna do the right thing, they don't have to, so why not sooner and gain a year, because I think our middle schools are just.
You know, I think you're gonna need to see increasing type of funding throughout the deficit to build with all the shortages.
Exactly, exactly.
Doesn't it also give us a minimal amount of time if it doesn't pass first, it would be a million and six and go again.
Let's get it right the first time, so I have to, but yes. But, but I agree with you, the, I mean, my thinking of why November made sense, didn't all make sense, and saving money makes a lot of sense. We made the decision we're gonna do this, we need to move on with it, and so, so let's meet on that, our, we're scheduled to meet on the ninth. We'll, we're just gonna talk about planning, and we're gonna try and address these questions. Um, and then we'll, we will, um, decide at that point if we need an additional meeting, if we met in our regular meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, and, uh, and then come back and, and do it on the, on that date. That, that fit? Everybody okay with that? And we'll put you in the, just making sure you're aware, I already mentioned Amanda's birthday is January sixteenth, Sue's birthday is December twentieth. So happy early birthday to you too. Um, we, um, we are, at this time, we're gonna go into closed session to discuss real estate. Uh, but to those of you that will not be with us, be here when we return, Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. Yeah. All right, it is, uh, nine twenty-one, and we will re-continue an open session. Uh, it's my recommendation that, uh, we, uh, authorize the superintendent to negotiate real property purchase for future school sites as discussed in closed session. Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion from Miss Camden, and the second from Mr. Carruthers. Any questions or comments? I'm fair with the motion, raise a hand, that passes unanimously. It is now nine twenty-two, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.